Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Ashland Planning Board for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Before we get started on our agenda this evening, Peter, did you want to go through how to connect from home?
Sure. So, thank you so much. So, if anybody is connecting or watching from home tonight, I will read the following. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by WA, I'm sorry, by WACA, also known as WACA, Ashland Public TV. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, is currently following the guidance of the Ashland Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities could take to prevent spread. In accordance with Governor Baker's suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC, section thirty, I'm sorry, chapter thirty A, section twenty, all public meetings are being conducted remotely, as we are tonight. The following information is provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. Excuse me, to participate remotely from a computer, please use the following, the link below to join the meeting whether on, excuse me, the Ashland Agenda Center. If prompted, please enter the ID, the meeting ID here is eight, six, five, one, two, six, four, six, two, five, zero. The passcode for the meeting is five, four, one, five, five, three. From a, from a phone, from a telephone, dial one, six, four, six, eight, seven, six, nine, nine, two, three, and enter the meeting ID, which is eight, six, five, one, two, six, four, six, two, zero, five. Passcode, five, four, one, five, five, three. If you are not registered, resume. You will be asked for your name and an email address. Please note, no participant ID is needed, just press pound, then ask, when asked. Telephone users may dial star nine to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. So, we are good to go.
Great, thanks, Peter. And before going through the rest of the agenda, the first thing to announce is probably that all matters, both the continued public hearing and the NAR for the one hundred Chestnut Street project are being continued this evening, and they will not be discussed, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And so, tonight, the board and the, well, the planning office has received an email regarding one hundred Chestnut Street from their attorney Jonathan Silverstein on Friday, October eighth. In the email reads, "Good afternoon, Peter, I hope all as well." Please accept the requested, the request, excuse me, please accept this as a request and agreement by Baystone Development that the planning board further continues, continues its consideration of the pending application to its meeting on October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. So, they did request that by email. That is for the Baystone Development Phase Seven at Hundred Chestnut Street. Then furthermore, the Fafford Company, to be being represented by Angela Confortier, with an email on October thirteenth, emails the Ashland Planning Board as follows. Dear members of the planning board, the applicant for the three hundred, I'm sorry, one hundred to one thirty Chestnut Street approval not required plan endorsement, Ashland Chestnut Realty LLC in Felonham Residential Two, number two, the Realty LLC, respectfully request that the planning board continue its public hearing on the above referenced application from October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one until its meeting on Thursday, October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This continuance is requested to allow the after time to review town council comments regarding lack conformity with the Ashland zoning code. Thank you, Angela Confortier. Those are two continuance requests that we have read now.
I don't think we have many, if any, one on at this time who may have been looking for the hundred Chestnut Street, but maybe we should keep an eye, Peter, if we start to get more people that we should remake that, make that announcement, if we see that happening.
Okay.
Otherwise, on the agenda, oops, sorry.
Nope.
Otherwise, on the agenda, this evening, we have Zero McGonco Road, a continued public hearing, and that's about the commercial property looking to put up contractor base. We also have a continued public hearing for thirty, three fifty-five West Union, which is the TJ's outdoor dining area. We are going to be discussing twelve Pond Street, some submitted colors and materials, and then some different administrative matters as well. So, so I think that brings us to opening the continued public hearing for Zero McGonco Road. Peter, can you brief us where we are at this time?
Of course. So, where we are at this time is the planning board at the last meeting, we discussed this matter, with attorney and civil engineer George Connors, who is here representing the application. I, the board, today, George and I had a chance to speak, and George is going to kind of walk through some of the conversations that he had with the owner of the site at the last meeting. The planning board requested really three items. Number one, at the last meeting, we talked about, attorney talked about how this would be a phase development, with the first building being phase one, and then the building towards the, I would say, the building would be more at the, I'd say, the intersection of Cherry Street and McGonco. Then the second building will be built a little bit further down the lot, as you enter down onto the building. The planning board did ask for a plan that showed both buildings. And therefore, Mr. Connors can kind of walk us through the plan that he has. And then the second thing is the planning board had a conversation with Attorney Connors regarding the, the proposed sidewalk, in a request for a proposed sidewalk on this property. I think Mr. Connors can represent, have a conversation with the owner. Mr. Connors was able to send me some material today. I know I wasn't able to get it out to the board, so this is fresh, fresh material for the board, and I apologize for the tardiness, but I think it's appropriate to continue to hear Mr. 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 Connors, since it is a kind of a, the other two big items were continued tonight, you can take some time and have that conversation with Mr. Connors. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Connors. But before that, does any planning board members have any items or things they want to ask Mr. Connors to cover within his presentation?
I guess I, if I could, I would, you know, I definitely would like Mr. Connors to share the images of whatever materials were presented late, which the planning board has not yet had a chance to see, if that's okay with you, Chair?
Oh, absolutely. I think whatever material he has to share, that he has, he can share with us today, it'll be good to get the whole, the whole picture of the project.
Okay, Peter, you can put those up, right?
Yes, I have them digitally, so I can share them. Mr. Connors, would you like to start with the revised plan that you have shared with us, or would you like to talk about the letter regarding the sidewalk that was submitted?
No, I think once the revised plan's up, we can point to some issues on it with respect to the sidewalk after I discuss the, the plan itself.
Just for the planning board members, I was able to put these up online today, I just didn't have the chance to email everything out. Can everyone see that?
That is not the one, that's the existing conditions, looking for a plan that was sent on.
This is it, George, right here.
Okay, good. So, if you can zoom in a little bit, maybe up to sixty percent or so. But that's fifty, that's fine, I think. We're dealing with that, that's really building initially. It had been shown as simply a slab. The plan has changed now to show the delimitations of the individual bays, and to extend the necessary infrastructure along the front of it and into each individual bay as required. So, that's really the only change to the plan in terms of the design elements of it. The next issue is the sidewalk. You had asked for sidewalk, I'd gone out there right after that meeting and looked at it, and one of the attachments to the letter that I sent back on the fifth October, showed a picture of some pole relocations out there, undertaken apparently by Eversource or NSTAR, whoever it is that runs the power and electric system out there. And in each and every location shown along the street where we have what's called UP designation, like a little circle along the edge of McGonco Road, there has been a new pole set somewhat behind it. That constrains the ability to put a sidewalk in that area. The poles are progressively further from the property line as you go from west to east, so I'm going to tell you where the poles are with respect to our property line, starting what do you call, four, you go four, then three, two, one, towards Cherry. Four is four feet off of the property line, so between the pole and the property line is four feet. And now there's a new pole behind that. And three is six feet, and again, there's a new pole kind of behind that. Pole two, as we get closer, and that's kind of near the hydrant, is a eight-foot separation from existing pole to the property line. And finally, as we get here, our entrance.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
So, so are you indicating that there's a existing pole, and there's going to be another pole, eight feet behind that pole?
No, I'm giving you the distances between our pole, the poles that are there from a few years ago, and our property line. So, four, eight, I'm sorry, four, six, eight, and then eleven. So, a sidewalk would have problems in the area of four, six, and eight. But that's exacerbated by new poles that have been placed. They're there, and there was a picture that I sent you of an example. So, now those poles are roughly three feet behind behind our existing poles. See that there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that, that's just typical. If you look up the street, you can kind of see the two poles in the left side of that photograph. There's really no room there for.
Is the, is the proposal that both of those poles stay there?
Oh, I don't think so. No, these poles are a little bit taller, and I think they're going to carry the power lines a little bit higher up, perhaps even three-phase power.
Meaning a pole is going to be removed?
I would think.
The older front pole should, shall be removed, Joe.
Okay.
I would think. So, in terms of that, there's six hundred feet of sidewalk that would need to be installed. And Mr. Orlando is not really in favor of that. He points out that he has provided for a sidewalk along Cherry Street. And in order to do that, there is a retaining wall that's needed that he has to construct about fifty feet from the rear property, property line to the south. And he's provided that easement back in the original days when the town was envisioning and had some plans for Quiet Zone Railroad thing, which apparently puts a island in the middle of Cherry Street to help with traffic control and thus eliminate the noise of the train coming through there, I believe. But in any event, we could look at those plans at the time, and we provided additional land that the town did not have to acquire, and have designed a sidewalk and a retaining wall for that to work. He has put two hundred feet of sewer along Cherry Street that we benefited down. There's an area out in the back of the site that may have a drainage line problem in the town easement that we have investigated during the initial design and investigation, and found that it may not be transmitting water from Cherry Street efficiently to the over at the western part of the property, and he's agreed to fix that. So, he's made some significant contributions. Cost of the sidewalk is something he really is not in painting, but we did talk about it, and we would be able to provide a five-foot easement from our property back in, so that at some point in time, if a sidewalk were constructed behind the poles, then there would be ample room for it. Looked at that with respect to the grading and our drainage system. And there's ten feet between our property line and our drainage infrastructure, so that area could be, at least five feet of it could be tackled. So, that is the bulk of our presentation at this point, and I'm happy to listen to questions, comments, and suggestions.
Tricia.
Yeah, Joe, I was, you had, you had mentioned that you were also interested in re-looking at them, the images of the materials, I assumed, so maybe we can bring those up. Peter, do you have them, I assume?
Do you want to look at the letter, or would you like to look at the site?
I think it's the renderings, I think.
Oh, the renderings from, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that we kind of have the big picture of, again, of what we're, we're looking at.
You want the professionally drawn architectural renders, is that correct?
Right.
Whatever the new stuff is, Peter, that we didn't receive, right?
I think the new stuff is just, is just about the, the plan, the site plan, and the information about the sidewalk. I think, I think otherwise, I think that was the big question last time.
Peter, I don't see any new material posted on Zero McGonco on the planning board website here. This thing is posted as October fifth, so maybe double check that, because I don't see it up.
If anyone wants to jump in, I think our discussion last time ended with just wanting, I remember, you know, I had wanted to actually have the, before we were looking at a, a plan that just called out for a pad for the second building, instead of, instead of being able to permit it with the, with the, it's shown as a building, as it was shown on the rendering, so I thought that was an important thing that we were acknowledging that it's a building and not just a pad as far as going forward. And then the issue came up about the trail that's down the block, and potentially, if there was an opportunity to connect to that. So, I think that's what Mr. Connors investigated, those, those questions.
Yes.
And Joe, I brought up the front view of the building to propose to look like this was presented at the last meeting.
Yeah. So, Madam Chair, I, I mean, I have a gut reaction here, if I, if I can.
Yep.
Um, so, not putting a sidewalk here is a big miss for us as a town. We've invested money, both town's money and CPC money in building this trolley book trail. Not getting a sidewalk on this stretch of road is, is a silly miss, right? So, um, you know, I, I wasn't aware of the other investments that Mr. Orlando's making to pay for the town sewer system here, and, you know, I, you know, I appreciate him doing that. I guess I wish that the town had just paid for its own sewer issues, right? Um, but, you know, I, you know, it's unfortunate Mr. Orlando doesn't want to pay for the sidewalk, but that said, I also, you know, understand, it sounds like he's paid for a number of other things, which are unquantified in dollar terms, but, um, you know, so I do think it's unfortunate the applicant isn't willing to do that, but I also understand. I, I think that in terms of the polls, I, you know, I don't have the full context of the history of them, but we as the town should manage this, manage the utility and the polls accordingly, so that we can get a sidewalk that looks good and doesn't have poles in the middle of it. And we ought to get Eversource to deal with this, so that we can have a nice sidewalk, so people can access this resource we've invested in. So, that, that, again, I don't have all the facts, the background, we're spending a ton of money with the utility on Main Street burying poles and making things disappear. We should get this done too, and get this somehow sorted in a way that we don't have telephone poles on the sidewalk. I think we should have a sidewalk, whether the town pays for it or Mr. Orlando, I think it's a no-brainer. And I think Ashland should demand that for itself, whether it pays for it itself, or whether, you know, however we get there, like, it's a miss if we don't achieve that objective here, that's my opinion, so, thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Anna or Deepa, do you?
I mean, I, I, I agree with, with Joe's points. I think it's, it's unfortunate. However, you know, one of the things I'm thinking about is that this was a project previously approved by the planning board. So, I look at this application a little differently from others in the sense that, in the sense that there was some due diligence, if you will, previously. So, although I don't like the fact that the sidewalks are not addressed, I understand the applicant's inability to address them in light of prior review by this planning board, not these members, but planning board review. It does raise for me kind of questions, larger questions of planning and what we as a board can do relative to, you know, having a, a more big-picture understanding of what the town needs and, and what the community needs for different projects, whether it's a a sidewalk here or there, or some sort of connection to community use. So, and, you know, that's outside the scope of this particular application for me, in light of the fact that this is previously. So, and you know, that's outside the scope of this particular application for me in light of the fact that this is previously reviewed. Um, but I'm looking forward to the retreat we're having next week and, and you know, I think this project is a good example of why we need a comprehensive plan. And we need um this board to be more proactive relative to projects in town and what, what it is that we need. As far as sidewalks, et cetera.
Thanks, Anna. Um, Deepa, did you wanna weigh in?
I didn't have anything. I think the two of them said it all.
Yeah, and I, I think from my point of view, I, I definitely understand what Joe is, is saying. Um. Um, and Anna as well as about planning going forward, I, I think, I think I'm agreeing actually with, with both of you. Um, for my part, and I kind of mentioned this a little bit last time, that relatively speaking, this is a small investment project. Um, and so it seems a bit unfair to put um. The expense of a sidewalk, which when you do it right, actually is, is, is quite a, a big-ticket item. Um, on um, on what, what is actually a, relatively speaking to things that we handle, a smaller budget project. I'm also wondering, given the side of the street that the trail is on, if in the end, with proper planning. If we actually, the town, it might prefer the sidewalk on the other side, like I, I don't know. And so, you know, I, I think it's um, I, I think it might be in our um. Um, best interest to um accept the easement. Um, so that if in the future. Um, this side, that side of the road is the proper place, we have really sufficient room. To do it, especially if it's, if it doesn't interfere with the plans for this project and their parking and the things that they're doing. Um, but we leave our options open to what is actually the best for. The comprehensive plan in a way of where this trail should go. Um, so um, so I, I guess that's where. Where I sit on it as well.
Could I, could I ask Peter if, if he's aware of any, anything that would impact our kind of our thought process on the easement? Is there any kind of town plan that you're aware of as far as sidewalk needs on which side or any of that?
So uh, I can take a look, Anna. I know the town, Ashland is a complete street, uh has adopted a complete street uh list. Um, and obviously Ashland's a complete street community, which is a state, um. Which is almost like, is a best practice at the state level. Um, I can provide a list to the board. And, and then we can kind of go from there. A lot of the complete streets were centered around the downtown. Uh, for example, I know one of the, you know, for, I'll, I'll throw an example out to you. Uh, one of the areas in the town, you know, that um sidewalks were pinpointed and indoor. Were in need of is a stretch of uh, the stretcher along West Union Street between the middle school and the state park. We have about a quarter of a mile strip where there's no sidewalk, so um typically um. So the town where they completed their complete street inventory uh went through and uh we had a company called Green International. You know, which are engineers and planners, and they created a list of, of streets and roads that, you know, sidewalks would. And they created almost like a technical where sidewalk should be with any kind of action. And, and I don't know if McGonco Road uh was on there. The plan kind of predates me in my arrival in Ashland. And that plan kind of sits down with the DPW. Um, I don't mean sits down, but is, I would say responsible, the responsibilities lies to DPW. But um, I can get that list and I can email that out to you, Anna, uh and explain it a little further. Uh, and then uh upcoming planning.
I think that was done as well at the time when we were also looking at the safe routes to school. Uh, and that related to um the complete streets to projects as well, but uh that, that's been, that's been a few years since that was um looked at.
Yeah.
Do you know that, that document would like specify what side we would want the sidewalk on as a town? Do you know if it went into that detail or?
I don't know if we'll go into that detail, Mr. Connor. I, I see you raising your hand. Are you trying to speak or are you?
Yes, I would like to. Uh, I think in answering or trying to. Onto your concerns relative to sidewalk. I did look at the uh idea of putting it on the other side, but. That building is, the other side is fairly close to the street and they park right up to it. So the pavement of the street basically extends to the face of that building on the other side. And secondly, this particular sidewalk on uh Mc- on Orlando's side. Is the outside of the street, so there would be uh, I think, plenty of sun um to help melt snow and ice on it, so. I, I think this is a better location, and we did discuss with Mr. Orlando. Yeah, to some great extent, getting easement along there, and I think that would be the better place for it. Aside from that, it ties into the sidewalk along uh Cherry Street.
Um, do we wanna see if there's other any um public comments at this time? Peter, I haven't, I don't have everyone's up on my screen, but if anyone wanted to.
Can I also add, can I ask one more question, Tricia?
Please.
Um, would you, George, um, do you have a sense, and, and I understand that. You know, it sounds like the board, we're not gonna be pushing the sidewalk issue, but do you have a sense from the applicant if? Um, well, I'm kind of imagining a future where, you know, let's say the town builds a sidewalk there for the trail, right? Um, on either side of this, for the future, would the applicant have, have any interest or ability to maybe add some, some. Bike racks or allow some parking in that parking lot during the day? Um, is there anything like that, that, that um, that you think the applicant would consider for the future?
Will you give me a minute to look at the plan? Is that all right?
And, and a kind of a related question is how busy is that parking lot during daytime hours on the weekend, for example, like a Saturday, Sunday? Do you expect that parking lot to be pretty full? For business use?
No, we, we've got quite a few parking spaces. We've got, I think we have forty-eight outside parking spaces.
Would you consider maybe giving the town access to, I don't know, four or six parking spaces for the rail trail?
I, I, I'm not playing, now trying to envision the layout.
Does that have any, any interest to the, the rest of the members of the planning board?
I think it's um, I think it's an interesting concept. I think it's so potentially. We're kind, we're kind of going into the world of complete unknowns here. So, but it could be a condition of um. Collaboration, you know, that um, that will look at it if and when the time comes. This, this area of town is obviously in um transition, and we just don't know what's going to happen, so um. But, but certainly, I think um. You know, a will, a willingness to collaborate would be, would be great, given that corner condition of the project.
I mean, I, I'm just, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, out loud that this area, like you said, is in development. It's somewhat commercial, but it's also. Really close to that trail. We don't yet know as a planning board, because we don't have a, a big picture kind of. Where we're gonna put the sidewalks, or how we're gonna connect that trail, or what use of the public is there? And, and I'm thinking this site and, and kind of the business piece of it is probably. Didn't allow for that parking to be quite open on weekends when the public may benefit from that. If the developer is willing. To be flexible and, and give the town access to, to some parking, it may be quite useful. To the town, in some ways perhaps even more so than, than a sidewalk. Depending on the use of, or the cost, if you will, um, by the public. In other words, if the town pays for the sidewalk, we're gonna need some parking there.
Well.
Can I comment?
Yeah, please.
I, I've looked at the plan briefly, but I think I can make a statement. Um, and the westerly end beyond our parking lot, uh well, actually beyond our stormwater. We have a little bit of extra room along the street and. Good layout, an easement in that location for um either bike racks or parking, wouldn't be a lot of spaces. But there would be some, and I'd have to work with the grades and setback to conservation. Um, no built uh zones. I don't have off, off my head, but there is some room there, and I think we could offer some sort of easement. Uh, in that location, as I said, on the westerly end of our stormwater and park. Would be coincident grade-wise with the road and um, I think it would work. But we would. Post to provide a bit of an easement.
Yeah, my um, I, I like the idea that the, that that area could be, um, like I said, on the end or in a way slightly, slightly separate, because. We don't know what these contractor bays are gonna become, and um, being very familiar with contractors myself, um, you know, they're dealing with. Big equipment sometimes and um, you know, I, I. Concerns me a little bit that that kind of parking lot is different than a dance studio parking lot where big equipment's coming in and out, and there's could be. Maybe not on the weekends, but these days, you know, they're working six days a week. Um. You know, there could be some safety issues in, in that kind of, that kind of environment. Um. So I think it's a great idea, you know, how we um, how we kind of formalize it. Excuse me, is, is, is a little bit out of my realm, and, and Peter would, would have to um maybe guide us in that. But I think it's generous of the. Property owner, the applicant, to be open to that, and I appreciate that.
Um, would, would DPW, am I saying that right? Would, would they have some expertise as far as the safety piece or, or some ideas about. Placement of those racks or, or parking or both that, that might work, or is there some other resource in town that could offer us some input on that? So that we don't ask the applicant to do something that's not safe?
Yeah, I can have a couple of conversation with DPW, you know, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I think, I think we, myself and George can figure out the best spot to put a bike rack. I'm not too worried about that. Um, and I, and I agree that easement's a great idea, Anna. Um, and. Um. And in my past, I was member of the, the planning, the, actually the DM was the rail committee, and so in. And, and it kind of, and what you just said sparked, you know, an idea for me, kind of, um, it was almost a flip. Planning board, it was a private business that helped pay and develop the parking lot, and the town actually gave the private business. Um, kind of like part, part, first parking refusal for like ten spaces, right? So it's almost like we're flipping it in the other direction. This is gonna be a private parking spot, but we're asking the applicant to give. You know, easements. Um, and it just maybe through signage to say, you know, um. You know, parking, you know, without, you know, you know, rail, you know, trail parking here, you know, uh.
Yes.
You know, you know, Friday, on, 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 on Saturday, Sundays, you know.
Exactly.
And I think that's an element of signage, excuse me, and I'm sorry, signage.
Sorry.
Just the understanding with the applicant, say, okay, this is what we would like to have here. Um, and then kind of go in that direction. Uh, but I'm sorry, I just want.
No, 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 I think, I think that's great. I, I was just gonna comment that that sounds awesome. If we can kind of. Make it flexible for the applicant, allow the applicant to put up some signage. I don't think we need parking there during the week. I, I think I'm, I'm more thinking week, you know, week can be the business use only, and, and. If the applicant is willing to give us some weekend access for parking and bike racks, that would be ideal. I mean, the bike racks, I think, could be used during business hours as well. In fact, they may be used by folks who are using the dance center. Um, for all I know. I mean, I don't know if, if any of those kids walk from school.
Yeah. And we do have bike racks at the, at the corner spot in downtown, you know, bike, bike racks are gonna be part of the streetkeeping process, and so I think, yes, a bike rack is good there. But I think also in the big picture of the downtown, we're gonna have bike racks. Uh, and we're gonna have places to kind of lock up, lock them up and, and let people come downtown. Um, and, and uh, and so I think that's what I could say about bike racks and, you know, that type of stuff, but um. I'm, I'm happy to work with George on, on that, on this kind of um idea.
Yeah, it seems to me a place that's less about bike racks, because bike racks implying you're locking up your bike and going into some place.
Right.
And more about, more about the parking, where I'm parking and taking my bike off the rack and going for a ride and leaving my car, car there. But again, that would be down the road, and if we decide not to put a bike rack, then we just wouldn't put one if one, one isn't needed in that location.
Yeah, and it may, um. I'm sorry, I have an idea, you know, I know, you know, in my neighborhood, there's actually a, a tool, right, or it's almost a stand or a kiosk. That actually has bike tools, allen wrenches, wrenches, you know, attached by cable to it, you know, so if anyone gets a flat tire. Or um.
That's interesting.
Or goes in that direction. Maybe it's something of that nature. Maybe the applicant will want to provide a kiosk or a bike tool kiosk at the, at, at, you know, a lot. At the site. Um, that would allow somebody, if someone were to find a tire and need tighten up a, a, tighten up a wheel or something, or adjust their seat. There was actually a tool, a, a kiosk there to allow them. So I think, different to favorite thought, but obviously I think i- it's all kind of connected, I would say.
I, I like Tricia's point that parking is probably a better choice than um a bike rack there if we have bike racks. Closer to downtown, so I, I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, and I love the idea that Peter just raised of some kind of sort of safety kiosks. How many feet? Are we away from the bike path if we have parking there for the bike path? Is it reasonable for, for a rider to kind of get to the bike path with safely?
Yes.
Okay.
It is close. It's not, it's not.
I mean, I mean, George, if you're, if, if the developer's willing to do that, it, it, it sounds like a, a great opportunity and, and a great collaboration, and. I'd love to see a condition that works.
Well, we'll provide, I believe, and I think it'll go along with me, we'll provide beyond our parking, an area for easement. Um, where you can do uh some sort of parking or, yeah, we've come up with a term for the easement. Parking um, like a parking for municipal purposes, short-term. The appropriate language, but an area big enough to hold maybe three cars, I think. And you can build it, you can't, you do whatever you want, it'll be there, and reserve it in perpetuity until you need it, and then turn it over.
I mean, if, if the applicant is willing to think about it, that'd be great. Um, you know, s- I, I, it'd be good to see how many spots, I. I mean, if three is what the applicant is willing to do, that'd be good to know if, if, if a few more is, is, is possible, that'd be great, but. See what you can find out.
Yeah, I think it's, I think he's saying that there's room in the easement for three parking spaces, but it's kind of unknown at this time. If. You know, if the weekends, they can say, hey, no one's using these parking spaces, so on the weekends, it's available for the trail.
Exactly.
But they'd be separate for the trail all times, and by envisioning this scenario.
Oh, so, so you're, you're looking at that, the, the easement would allow for three spots that would be accessible from. Not from the parking lot, like, separate. Okay, so the two spaces are just separate. Okay.
Yeah, two or three, I think. There'll be enough room, and it will create an easement, be enough, so that you can construct the parking spaces, however many they come out after I. Sit down with the ruler and a.
George, you cut off a little bit, but it sounds like you're willing to chat with the, with the developer and, and Peter as well to kind of come up with something and. Maybe even talk about that little rack, the rack idea that Peter had. Um.
Yes.
Is that, is that agreeable to the rest of the board as well? I know Tricia seems to like it. Our Deepa and Joe, are you okay with that?
I think it's, I think it's an understanding, though, um, and make sure that, to make sure this is clear. I'm, I'm getting the sense that uh. That really it's about providing the easement. It's not about provide, it's not about creating the sidewalk or the parking spaces. It's providing, giving back the land. For the town to do what it wants when we get there. So um, so it's about the town owning that easement, should we, should we as a town find?
Invest the capital to do it.
Right, right. Which, again, to me, again, to make sense, because I, I don't think it's ever a good thing to start um. I don't know, putting a little bit here and a little bit here without that comprehensive plan that Anna mentioned, right? We're kind of just guessing that, hey, maybe we wanna come with a couple of spots here. Um, and I, I think that might be a waste of resources. Um, so to me, to have the, yes, it would be nice to have a complete finished sidewalk and a few parking spaces. But that might be a waste of resources. If, if we don't really know what we're doing at this.
I mean, I'm, I'm very delighted by the applicant's willingness to talk about an easement, and I'd love to hear more. Um, I, I do think that. We already know there's a bike trail there, so um, if the sidewalk is out of the question, you know, I'd love to see actual. So, um, if the sidewalk is out of the question, you know, I'd love to see actual parking spots ready to go for public use. But if the applicant comes back and is unwilling to do that and all we get is an easement, I'm not going to say no. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at.
There would be no construction. It would be sidewalk easement which we've already proposed. Um, and we would now consider adding at the western end of the property along the McOnco Road, an area reserved as easement for any future work. I would like to do for some sort of access parking to the rail.
I'm curious, doesn't the trail have a larger master plan of how things are kind of past that trail point? And how the town is getting connected to that? I mean, I'm sure there must be something in that plan, right? And I'll be just surprised that it just stops there and has no connection beyond to the downtown.
Well, it's, it's going to connect. Well, it's the downtown project, there's a tip project in two thousand twenty-four, which is going to change that intersection. And then on the other end of it, it connects to Memorial Drive with a new YMCA. So.
So what is that plan between the section that's there on McOnco Road and the trail? Is there anything on that?
I think it's just continue to invest in that sidewalk.
So, I mean, the trail, what, what, when the trail hits, when the trail transits on a street, from one portion of the trail to another, it's just, well, this is how you get to the next portion of the trail. That, you, you know, the route is very well laid out and planned, but it, the, the connections between just have assumptions that you're using the street or the sidewalk if available. Like the tr- the plan doesn't contemplate improvements to the street or other things to create sidewalks to, to connect it. It, it just says, here's a segment, here's a segment, you walk up this road, you get, like, that's pretty certain that's how it's kind of put together, right? And glued together.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I was thinking of Boston's Greenway, right? It's like, how is that story continued from one end of Boston to the other end? It doesn't feel like you're getting off and on, but there feels like there's a connection. Um, yeah, maybe the sidewalks are that connection, but there feels like it was part of the plan. Um, obviously Greenway came after, but it feels like it was part of the plan. So I was curious if that was ever thought about when the trail happened.
So if we're going to get more information for the next time from, I, I guess I'm curious, Tricia, do we need more information from the applicant on the easement piece, right? So that Peter and the applicant can connect? If we're kind of doing that for next time, do we want to get some input from the folks involved in the, in the rail trail to better, or from Peter to better understand kind of what Deepa just raised?
I think the easement is the easement. I think, I think, I think Mr. Connors is going to look at what, what they can give. They have their commercial space, they know what the spots they need to make their proposal work. The proposal that was accepted before, and now they're willing to kind of give this easement. So I think it, it is what it is. And either we, we, meaning the town, we either use it in the future or we don't. But they're willing to set aside and, and give it to us should we need it. So I don't think it's like having the trail people get involved and saying, oh, we really could use 10 spots when 10 spots aren't available. It's not, it's not part of the question of.
Yeah, I'm not, that's not what I was referencing. I was deep, I was more referencing deepest question of, you know, there must be some thought about this from somebody as to what's needed in that space. I, I'm not assuming they want anything in particular.
It seems to me in that case, it would just be about, hey, we don't, really don't need an easement at all because we're not looking at that side of the road. So if that's useful, then maybe, but I don't think it's about, um, I don't think it's about being able to, um, looking, you know, looking to change what's being, the easement that's being offered. So at least, at least from my perspective. So, Peter, what were you, you were about to say something?
I was just going to say for the next, well, a couple of things, um, you know, the, the easement would have to be shown on the, right? I think that also that has to be done, it has to be reviewed, and obviously the board has to take a look at the material that was submitted. And then the second thing is, I think, which will make some sense for, for the board is for me to send out, um, that, uh, uh, excuse me, the complete streets report and the plan and the list of streets and the sidewalks. Uh, so the planning board gets a better understanding of where that study at the town undertook, you know, I believe two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen timeframe, um, where those sidewalks are and have been identified for, uh, the need, I would say.
I mean, with that information, I mean, I think it's appropriate unless someone has something new to add that we, um, have, have a motion to continue this to the twenty-eighth, where all the information can be distributed to the planning board, all the new information. Um, the, the, the line of the easement can be drawn so that we can, um, you know, and, and maybe, um, Peter, even if you're willing to, um, draw up some preliminary, uh, conditions. Cause it seems like we have, it seems like we have a general consensus of, of where we're going here. It's just how do we work out the specifics because they're a little bit unusual? So that we all have all that information on the twenty-eighth and maybe we can, um, maybe we can, you know, put this to rest at that time.
Okay.
Does that, that sound good to?
Sounds reasonable. Do you want me to take a stab at making that motion?
I would love that.
Okay.
Can you, one, one, one second, do you, Madam Chair, do you want to take public comment at this point?
Yes, I just saw that, sorry. Um, Peter, can you?
Sure, uh, Mr. DeSoni, uh, you have your hand raised, so I ask you to unmute.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. Um, I would like to ask the question from the, from the very beginning of this agenda. Is this gender have all this is on the site plan? Think in the, in the uses of what there is, or are they going to be added to site plan review?
Uh, come again, Mark? I'm sorry, I lost you.
Okay, is the agenda of this Zero McOnco? In the paragraph that is read before you, before this got opened, didn't mention anything about trails or, um, easements or anything like that. So why was the main, why would the discussion get diverted to those? When this, when it's just a, uh, and the gen item as is read?
Oh, I think I can answer that. We've, we've been discussing this for several other meetings, Mark. And so we already kind of covered all the other issues in previous meetings. And this is kind of where we ended up for, for this meeting. Kind of, we're just talking about the remaining issues after already discussing other site plan review issues in previous meetings.
So all, all this about the, um, the, the trail and all that, we'll discuss with other meetings. Has the developer been told that it's going to be discussed tonight?
Um, yes, everyone was aware. I think it's been on the, it's been on the agenda.
Yeah, and most, most of all, Mark, it was a follow-up from our last meeting with the developer, uh, and determining George Connors regarding, uh, you know, the request of the planning board.
So, um, as, as it has been discussed as for tonight, what's going to be, uh, is this, is the other agenda? Let's see, the, the discussion of the trail and the sidewalks and all that, will that be pushed to the, the, um, twenty-eighth too? Well, that's added on now?
Well, we're, we're only discussing the trail as it is relevant to this particular project. We're not discussing the trail in general because that would be out of our.
If I misunderstood, but that's basically what I was, I heard through what the last, what, fifteen, twenty minutes about that? And the easements of the sidewalks and all, I would think, I would understand if, correct me if I'm wrong, that the easement and sidewalks would be the first two and then the trail would be a, be a third to add in after.
Um, the, but the, the site is, the site is just trying to respond to a trail that's already there. So we're just, we're just talking about those elements of this site that may have something to do, that could complement an existing trail.
Now, when the easement and sidewalk before the site itself and the trail can, can be talked on to be an add-on, once the easement and sidewalks are being voted and voted in, along with the trail, they'll be after?
Well, the trail is already being built, Mark. The trail is a totally separate issue that has nothing to do with this project. The trail is happening, right, Peter?
Correct.
Right, so we're not, we're not going to have an agenda item, Mark, at the next, um, at the neck. We, we're not planning to, to kind of make any decisions about where the trail goes. That's not what's in front of us. We're just trying to figure out if this particular development can create some parking or allow an easement for future town use for parking. Um, so that if people are using this trail that's already happening, that has nothing to do with this project, it's just happening already. It just happens to be really close to this project, can maybe use those parking spaces. Does that make sense?
It, it makes sense, it makes sense to me. And, um, my other part, my other part of the question, what I have in the back of my mind, before this was talked on, Zero McOnco, is, is that the entrance just off of Cherry Street by the dance studio?
It is.
Is that the, uh, Open Space Gravel Foundation?
It's just open, yep, right now with some building materials on it, I think.
So it's just by the railroad tracks, railroad crossing, right at the end, right at, at the entrance of McOnco.
That's right.
So the, an easement's got to be needed for a sidewalk for that. And the trail is, is going to be a different distance away from the entrance of McOnco there.
Um, right, it's a little, just a little ways down the road.
Thank you.
All right, Anna, you're on.
Um, so I'll hereby make a motion to continue the Zero McOnco, McOnco Road project. Am I pronouncing it right, Peter? To Thursday, October twenty-eighth. Um, and we've, the applicant will, together with Peter, discuss the easement proposal so that that can be presented in more detail to the board. Peter will provide us with a street inventory for our information and a possible a draft, um, since we appear to be heading towards a, a decision that would, um, include the easement proposal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Deepa, you can start us off now.
Deepa, I can.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye, so it passes four zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Welcome, thank you.
All right. Next, continued public hearing for three fifty-five West Union, uh, site plan review. This is the outdoor dining area for TJ's and frankly, I can't re-
Just for a, for a mechanical fairpoint, the, the next thing on the agenda was the Hundred Chestnut Street special permit review. I know I did read those two, I wanted that, those two continuances into the record. But could we just, uh, just, I, I can either go through and say we accepted the continuance, but have a motion to accept those continuances to the twenty-eighth, at least for that Hundred, uh, chestnut before we move on to three fifty-five West Union Street.
Yes, so.
So.
I can make the motion.
Sure.
Okay, I'll hereby make a motion to move the Hundred Chestnut Street project and A and R item as well to the twenty-eighth of October.
We, we, we've got to make a motion to accept their proposed continuance.
Got it. Motion to accept their proposal to continue both items to the twenty-eighth.
Is that okay, Peter? Can we do them together?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Deepa, I can.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, four zero zero. Now we can move on. Good teamwork here. Um, okay, three fifty-five West Union, this is the TJ's outdoor dining area. And someone remember, refresh my memory, did we ever actually, did this ever actually open up, Peter?
No, it did not.
Okay, I'm not going crazy then.
We are not going to, so this has been continued for multiple times. Um, and Mr. Connors and I have been kind of working on this. Um, but, uh, for this hearing, I am going to open it up and I will read the public hearing and those into the record. So, um, I will do that, uh, right now. So the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October fourteenth. The original, uh, notice was for Thursday, June tenth. It was continued a number of times in the summertime at seven fifteen P M on, uh, the Zoom video conference. Uh, to hear the petition of John Tomas requesting site, I'm sorry, design plan review and site plan review per chapter forty-eight, section six, six, the Massachusetts zoning act and chapter, uh, two hundred and eighty-two, section nine point six, design viewpoint, uh, and section nine point four, site plan review of the action by. The applicant is proposing to construct an outdoor dining area adjacent to the existing restaurant. Uh, the property in question is located at, uh, three fifty-five Western Street, Sessors Map, uh, twenty-three, lot two fifty-five in the Highway Commerce District. Parties wish to be heard on this matter shall submit comments to the planning board at half time and where appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed in town hall during normal business hours, also at our website. Um, for more information, uh, excuse me, for more information or to submit comments, please contact Peter Matcheck at five oh eight, five three two seven nine two seven, and or at my email address, pmatcheck@ashlandmass.com. Um, just to, we'll, we'll talk about this if I can have two seconds. Um, so obviously twenty months, we've been in dealing with COVID nineteen. In the last twenty months, the, uh, the Massachusetts, as everyone knows, has a lot of outdoor seating, um, to happen. Right, that ban in outdoor seating is going to be, or the plug was pulled on outdoor seating. And restaurants will no longer have the ability to, um, place indoor, have temporary outdoor seating. Um, which, up until I believe it is April twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two. Of that date, all the temporary seating, outdoor seating that was permitted, um, that no longer will exist. And so, um, this is one of, I believe, a few applications that will be coming for requesting outdoor seating, site plan approval, review processes, um, in the coming months to permanently, um, establish outdoor seating, uh, beyond the date, which is currently allowing temporary outdoor seating. So with that said, uh, TJ's, um, great restaurant right up on the Ashland border with Holliston. Um, they have been using the parking area, uh, in the parking, or the parking lot for additional outdoor seating. Uh, and so what they're really trying to do here is to permanently, um, develop additional outdoor seating for their patrons, um, to come and visit and hang out and grab a bike. And so, uh, I've been working with owners who have been great in understanding, uh, and also George as the representative to present the, um, which I, I present the plan with George, I'll hand it, hand it over to George in a minute. Um, which I believe is a plan that's been thoroughly looked at and thought about and to really provide everybody with a safe place to have a bike, eat or to grab a drink. Um, while allowing TJ's to, uh, continue to have a very successful business. And so, um, that's why I just kind of wanted, you know, only it's kind of, uh, talk to the board about what, how we, how do, however we've gotten to the, to the point we are, um, with outdoor seating, uh, in the regulations, I would say. So, excuse that banter, but, uh, Tricia, I, I will hand it back to you.
Um, I, I think it's just ready to, um, you know, see the drawings. Are, are you going to be, um, do you have them?
Yeah, I have them.
Okay.
Uh, George.
Can I ask a clar- can I ask a clarifying question of Peter? You mentioned there's other restaurants coming with similar thought, similar concepts. Can you give us a sense of how many you're expecting, um, you know, in the next six months? How many restaurants in Ashland do you think we're gonna, are going to be looking at something like this?
I'm expecting probably two or three. I know Mazi up on one twenty-six, uh, i- is looking to do more of a, uh, to do, you know, they have their tent. Uh, and definitely very successful and obviously as the had pandemic trudges along, I think people are trying to go out to dinner, but are getting, are more comfortable sitting outside, right? So.
So two or three more in the next six months, just for context. Yep.
Yeah, probably two or three more. And I think the number one thing is, these are dozens of seats, right? You know, this isn't just your one or your two, or your, you know, your cafe seats that are gonna sit out in front of their storefronts. You know, we're not going to be reviewing that, those type of seating arrangements. But these are restaurant seating arrangements that, you know, will affect parking, or parking and waitstaff and ingress and egress and safety. Uh, that's will be coming from.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna pull this up, so please bear with me. All right, George, so I'm going to share my screen. And this is the plan, uh, which I believe, which was uh I was, I was able to get a hold of. And uh Mark could tell me why I can't. But would you let me zoom in?
Yeah, two or three times. Maybe one more and slide it.
I'm gonna try to get it to the best. Uh, everyone can notice the Ashland Hopkin County Town Line runs through the parking lot in the building.
Yes, it does.
Right, right through the building.
All right, George, is that a good spot for you to uh?
Can you slide it? Yeah, there you go. That's even better. Okay, so we have uh TJ's built probably around nineteen twenty. And as you noted, it is in uh both towns, the building and most of the lot. Um, there are two parcels in Ashland. If you look at the two fifty-six, fifty number along the street, you can see a line coming down, hitting the street just to the right of it. And there is the approximate property line up in the back there. So Ashland is actually two little parcels. For whatever reason, they have them. And then Hopkinton has a parcel, combined about an acre and a half of land. For which almost all of it has uh been uh improved to some extent. Mostly parking uh surrounding the building. There's a little bit of uh undeveloped uh land along the edges of the parking. And the parking is generally paved, um, but in the left uh back corner and in the rear, some of the parking is gravel and it's delimited by that dash line that you can see running. It's through the T O in total land area continues up. There's access uh on both ends of the building, um, in and out is about twenty-four feet between the way the spaces are laid out. They're roughly nine by eighteen. Um, and there's about a hundred and uh, a hundred and a hundred parking spaces on the site and by the requirements for square footage of building, we need forty-six. So we have, well, in excess of what we need. Um, the existing building, I've uh added the uh uh common victualers license for the seat count. They allow for um restaurant of sixty and a bar of fifty-eight and an outdoor deck of sixty-five. That was uh prior to this particular COVID issue. Existing deck has thirty-two seats, as you can see on the right side of the building, which is the east side of the building. Um, so the uh area that was previously used for outdoor seating is delimited by the uh concrete barriers that make that little arc just along the, the south-east corner of the building. That area is gonna be consolidated down to that little rectangle that you see adjacent to the existing deck. There are several steps going down from the existing deck to the parking lot and that parking lot drops about two feet from the northwest to the southeast corner. So what we are proposing is to push these uh barriers tight to each other and put a screen behind them and fill inside with crushed stone and then put patio pavers of some sort. Create a level surface in there. There's a little diagram on the left-hand side of the uh plan showing kind of a uh elevation through where that, where it would be, if you could slide plan up to the right and uh goes that, Peter. Slide the plan to the, so we can see the lower left corner.
It's uh.
More, it's off that, it's completely, completely different little detail. Well, to the left of the plan. Won't even see that.
In the lower left corner, Peter. It's a little diagram of the, yeah, lower left.
Yes, I'm sorry, I got it.
Slide all the way.
All right, all right.
Okay, so that's what it's gonna look like. I think the plan is a lot obscure, but um basically you can see how the block wall is gonna go across and we're calling for um that area to be infilled underneath that dotted line. You can see patio grade there. And that comes up uh a little bit below the top of the blocks. They're about uh thirty inches tall as they sit out there now. So there'll be a little bit of a reveal, um, but at the northwest corner, it'll be at grade. And then there will be these planter boxes, which are concrete boxes that are uh finished with a kind of a stone, small stone veneer. And we're proposing several of those along the face of that facing out towards thirty-five. And there'll be seasonal plantings in those. And there'll be no increase in impervious surfaces. The uh grade will be flat, so there'll be no issues with respect to handicap access from parking lot. That's a simple way to do this particular thing. We're eliminating parking space, if you wanna go back to plan view, Peter, uh to the, to the east of the proposed outdoor seating on grade. And the traffic pattern can stay pretty much as it is. Now it has been truncated because of those uh barriers, but it will return to what it once was. And then to the further east, uh that uh parking and access remain the same. There's no other changes to the site. They're gonna patch and fix some of the pavement that is in a little bit of disrepair. Um, and the dumpsters remain uh same as out in the back. Site, as I said, is almost all pavement or building. So there's really no increase in pervious surfaces or change to the site. This is a very, very simple um um, construction activity. It doesn't change. It doesn't require um any work on the pavement or in the uh subsurface soils. It just simply bring a layer of crushed stone over pavement with a patio paver on top of that. So um everything would remain the same in terms of creation, no infiltration into the ground, but infiltration through these um and out onto the pavement as it once existed as a parking lot. And I think that's as simple as it is. I'm happy to respond to your questions and comments and suggestions.
Um. Immediate questions from the board?
So, so you're propose, so the proposal is that you'll be able to drive your car right next to the concrete blocks that the limit the edge of the patio, right?
Correct.
Okay. And is the belief that if somebody makes a mistake in their car and hits the gas, that those blocks will stop a car from going into that dining area?
Yes.
What's the ank, what what's the concept? Uh, uh, it's, I see, I mean, there's basically concrete blocks. They literally were concrete Legos. So the under, what you've explained is you're literally gonna push them together and make a contiguous wall and then do the inside grading and create the patio surface, right? So there's, is there any anchoring or sub-anchoring of those concrete blocks below the surface? Or they're just sitting on the surface? Is that what the proposal is?
They're gonna sit on the surface just as if they were highway barriers.
Okay. But a car going ten, twelve miles an hour, less than that, it it'll stop that? It'll, it'll stop a car from moving through there? As, as contrived?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you see the existing parking base size remain the same or did that change to nine by eighteen? Or was it always nine by eighteen?
They're all roughly nine by eighteen.
Okay, so it's not changing any of the dynamics at this point?
No, the only thing that we're doing with respect to parking is, as you see beside the out, the proposed outdoor seating that we're talking about, we're eliminating parking that used to exist there.
Okay, and you have excess of forty parking spots?
Yes, quite a few.
And and Peter, could you educate, I guess I'm the newest member of this board and I'm still educating myself. Is there a parking requirement in general for, for a project of the, of like this or for, for an expansion of a business?
So yes, uh, and I'm just grabbing my mind real quick. So regarding parking at a restaurant, I believe you need to have one parking spot for four stools and or four seats uh to be exact.
That's correct.
So, so just to do the math real quick, George, how many were on, how many seats were in the common vic uh permit?
One hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, one hundred and eighty-two.
So therefore, Anna, you could take one forty, one eighty-two, divide that by four. So that is that.
Tabulation on the plan is forty-six.
Yeah, so it'd be forty-six spots. So therefore.
Go ahead, go ahead, Peter.
So it'd be forty-six spots and so, um, so there are forty-six spots in addition. This proposal uh would be for thirty-two additional seats. The thirty-two additional seats would need um correct me if I'm wrong, uh, eight spots.
So, so, so eight more spots are needed?
No.
Sorry, I'm trying to catch up to your math. I'm pulling out my calculator.
The site currently has more parking spots than it needs right now.
Understood. So in other words, adding these thirty-two seats, the applicant is still meeting the requirement of parking?
Hundred percent.
Got it. Okay.
May I clarify that, please? There, the outdoor permit that issued and reissued and reissued is for sixty-five outdoor seats. There has never been sixty-five. There has been thirty-two in the existing deck. So we're really not exceeding um what was approved by the town for the killers licensing. Um, but the entirety is a hundred and um eighteen seats. No, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty-two seats. Uh, that was previously allowed, even before we relocated some of these onto the ground, let's say. And that amount of parking is forty-six required for all of that. We're, we don't need more parking in any way, shape or form for these additional.
Understood. And you're proposing to make the thirty-two permanent outside, right? No more than thirty-two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we really don't wanna touch the common victualers and selectments licensing.
And could you clarify kind of the, the planned, the plan for the rest of the parking lot? And I say that I I say that as someone who's ridden my motorcycle to eat lunch there and dropped my bike years ago because that parking lot is quite uneven and quite um, needs some work. So what are you guys doing for that parking lot overall?
So if you notice just up in the upper right-hand corner of the picture above the twenty-four foot dimension, there's repair pavement this side of building, that side of the building. No, all the way put your arrow over right, right, to the top. No, arrow. Yeah, right there, there's a note, repair pavement this side of building. Matter of fact, I believe I was driving by there the other day and they were out there with um paving uh material and fixing bottles. There is a uh airing of the existing paving.
That's good to hear. I think that, that to me is important because that parking lot is not the most um the most pedestrian or um vehicle friendly, the way it it's currently set up as far as conditions of it.
I would agree with that. Yeah, it was somebody out there looked at the last minute.
And I, I think it's exciting and great that more, you know, that, that TJ's is expanding um or wants to expand here. I, I just wanna make sure that when we got more humans and more traffic that that parking lot is in prime condition. So we don't, you know, we don't run into liability issues or people getting hurt both for the development, developer and, and frankly, for the town as far as safety issues, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm a little, I mean, I, I too, I'm um really happy to see these outdoor spaces becoming permanent because I think it's been one of the silver linings of this, this whole thing to realize that we can tolerate being outside and, and more types of weather and having the opportunities to do that. So I think that's great. Um, I share Anna's concerns about this parking lot when it gets busy. I do not ride a motorcycle here, but I do attend with children who um need to make their way across the parking lot. And um and, and it can, can get very busy. Sometimes that parking lot can get very full because it's a very popular place. And um and so I, I think it's important that the parking really gets looked at carefully in this because without an engineer looking at can this wall withstand this? I'm a little nervous about just, like, I, I would like to know who's, who's putting their stamp on that. You know, maybe that's the civil engineer that they're gonna provide those details and make that, and make that guarantee of safety. Um, so that, so that's one thing, that, that it really does have to withstand. The other thing is, I, with such a big parking spot, it seems that there might be a better traffic pattern. Like right now, there's three ways to go in and out of this of this parking lot. And one of them goes right by the outdoor seating area. So I'm wondering if there's just a better way to rearrange some of this parking so that there's um fewer driveways and uh greater distance maybe between the moving cars and the outdoor space. And the third.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and the third thing is that um, I know it's just a just a diagram maybe right now, but the, in, in the corner, the diagram that you were showing in the corner about how it's constructed. Accessibility is a really big issue that has to be maintained with, with this, um, that it has to be accessible. And the diagram right now, both the diagram and this plan, at least in my reading, I don't think they're accessible. Like, uh, if you're gonna go, this is twenty-four inches high, right? Twenty, twenty-four inches high?
The walls are twenty.
What's that?
Blocks are twenty-four inches high. As I indicated, the northwest corner or the corner on the top left of this little rectangle is sloping, the existing pavement slopes to the other corner, the diagonally opposite corner, two feet. That's why if you look at the patio grade in that diagram with the people in it, we're leveling that inside those concrete barriers. So it's perfectly level. And it can be perfectly level because underneath is gonna be crushed rock. So its accessibility is not an issue.
Okay, I, I see, I see what's happening. Um. I wonder a little bit about how the ramp is working. Um. Cause it, wasn't there showing a ramp or is that just a change in grade? What was that?
That's the change in grade, as I said.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so at the top, it's gonna be at the existing pavement.
Okay.
And at the bottom, out near one thirty-five, as close as we get. We've gotta put in crushed stone up, you know, several uh, one and a half or so.
So right where those arrows are, at the top of the seating area, and it's right where those two arrows are, that is flush. I am just able to, if I'm in a wheelchair, just to roll straight in from the parking lot?
Yes.
Right, and as I go toward the toward the road, as I go toward the road, I'm actually higher and higher in the air above the parking. Okay.
And then the blocks stick up a little bit beyond that. In case you wanted to roll out into the street, you couldn't.
Okay, so that makes sense. I think the other thing is to um is to note that um we may, you may need um I'm not sure about this, it would just have to be looked at code-wise, that as far as like the railing around that. I mean, it's only twenty-four inches high, but I think there may, I think there's still some kind of um you know, you can't get a child pushing against that um uh that trellis, say, and 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 it has to have some degree of strength that's regulated by the code. Um, so um so that would be need to be looked at as well.
I believe that's thirty inches, and we're not.
I think thirty inches, I think thirty inches is for a residential uh property. Um, you know, when it's accessibility, even even a small um you know, when we're talking about accessibility, even a small change is is a much bigger, typically a much bigger issue. Um, and I I don't do a lot of commercial work, so I'm not gonna gi- give all those facts for sure, but I would want it to look be looked at very carefully as far as again, it's kind of safety, it's kind of parking lot safety and the safety of these, cuz it doesn't come across that it's a handrail, it comes across as it's maybe a decorative trellis or and or lattice work. Um, and I'm a little leery of that, that, because falling from two feet in the air can still be fairly serious. So um yeah, but those those things have to be done to code. Um, and I'm just, I I just can't speak for what it is, cuz it's not the thing I do every day.
Tricia, you're absolutely right, and I think for commercial, it is not thirty inches. It's definitely, I I'm banking out myself at this point. It's somewhere between eighteen to sixteen inches. It's kind of a much lower uh this one, and I would love to see as well. So if it's a twenty-four inches high, uh, you're gonna have like literally a twenty-four inches kind of a ramp that kind of needs to get into this space somehow. So I'd be curious to see how that gets factored into this tiny space. And the other one is, this the six-foot concrete uh barrier that we have. I'm not sure if how that affects the elevation at any point, and what is that look and feel from the street side? Is it gonna block that building totally? Does that matter at all? Um, because it's kind of something that we're saying it's gonna be a permanent feature on the streetscape moving forward. And I'd be curious to see how that really kind of works with that elevation, because I'm sure when this building came up, we did pay attention to all that details. And now, having the six foot, how is that gonna really affect that look and feel?
They're not six feet high, they're only uh twenty-four, thirty inches high.
Oh, okay, that section looked, it was way higher, taller than the person um drawn, but.
Can you scroll back, Peter, to the little diagram on the side?
I think that's the lattice fence that was being proposed, is that correct?
So that that note which says six feet concrete barrier, is that the width?
Length.
Can you scroll down, Peter?
Yeah, they're they're roughly six feet long, yes.
The the max height of that concrete block, like, if you look at the block wall line, it's at your kneecaps.
Yes.
And then at the other end, it's basically ankle height.
Okay, the fence is kind of closer to the restaurant itself.
Correct.
Yeah, the fence is to kind of block um the view of everything from the street.
The fence would wrap the entire concrete wall, right, Mr. Connors?
The two sides, yeah, the front side and the side side.
The rear would be open?
Yeah.
Yeah, the the question, the safety question comes up on, obviously, the side where you're two feet off the ground, which again, doesn't seem, it's not a lot, you know, residentially, you don't need anything on there at all. But I'm just not sure that's the case commercially.
We'll look at.
Yeah. Yes.
Because I'm less technical and more visual, would it be possible to see like a, like a more of a rendering that that's um what's the word for it? That's more kind of street view?
Yeah, something less.
I would suggest.
Something less diagrammatic.
You looked at Google Earth, I'm sorry, Google for the existing, just sort of in your mind's eye consolidated that smaller footprint, because you can see the patio uh system that they have out there now covering all that area. I think that might answer your question is.
Yeah, I mean, it's giving me a little bit of an idea, but it's hard to, it's hard for me to see that, how it's gonna look from the street with that lattice fence. I mean, if if other members of the board don't need to see it, it's fine. Um but anyways, I I I do have a question, but I don't wanna, if this seems like an important topic, if others have wanna continue to discuss it, um, I I have a separate question.
I I think Mr. Connors is just clear about the questions about uh about safety. You know, a safety and code, which, you know, I think come first. Um, so um, I I think it's fine if you have your question, Anna, wanna shift us a little bit?
Yeah, I, so, so um, I I I'm just, I I'm loo- looking at the Google Maps as well, and TJ's is right on that, on the town line, right, with with Hopkinton, right, Peter? It's literally like coming into town. Remind me, Peter, is there is there a sign there to kind of welcome, welcome folks into the town of Ashland from that side of town?
I I I I'm assuming, yes, there is.
It there there is, but it's on the Hopkin, it's towards Hopkinton, it's not. I don't know, there's something on that stretch of one thirty-five, I think.
I mean, my only, I, you know, I'm kind of thinking about this project, and I'm thinking big picture, and I'm thinking about kind of growth in Ashland, and, you know, restaurants are growing, and and we wanna kind of utilize this and 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 empower these businesses to grow. And, you know, it's gonna attract people from other towns to come into TJ's, right? To that outdoor space into Ashland. And I'm just thinking TJ's is that first thing you see when you come into Ashland? Um, and is there a way for us to kind of collaborate and work off of that with TJ's to allow that entrance into town to be somehow highlighted more? Um, you know, I I, as I come into town from that side, um, there's little clues to when town begins and ends, and TJ's is kind of the entrance point into town, looking at the town line. Um, and I just wonder, I don't have a particular concept I'm asking about, George, but I wonder if if the if the if the developer might have some ideas of collaborating with the town to kind of make that entrance point um more more powerful, if you will, like, welcome to Ashland or or something where um, because TJ's is literally on that line. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I'm looking at the map, and it looks like it's feet away from the official line.
The line runs through the building.
Right through the building.
Right.
I really don't know where you're going with that, I I'm not.
I mean, is there a way that you guys would consider collaborating as far as a sign of some kind to welcome people to Ashland, for example, or some sort of visual?
I'll I'll talk to the boys and see what they think.
I mean, I don't think you, I don't think you, yeah, I don't think you need to talk to them unless other folks on the on this board are interested in what I'm kind of exploring. Um, so I don't know what others think about this.
Well, you know, I I think it's, I mean, I think it's a good, you know, to always have these things in mind, but a- again, I feel like without a comprehensive plan that's been approved, that's been looked at and approved, we're kind of y- you know, planning board is kind of then trying to things here and there um without a comprehensive plan. And so I'm I'm kind of hesitant to do that. Um, I I'd like to stay more focused on the outdoor eating area, because even the, you know, even the parking lot, which, hey, I would love if they repaved this whole parking lot and have put down nice bright yellow lines for the parking spaces and and all that. But it's not really part of the proposal, and the cost of doing it isn't necessarily in the project budget. So I think it's about focusing on, to me, what they're asking for and making sure that they're doing it up to the standards, that the project that they're asking for, doing it up to the standards that are required and expected. Without, and and I think there's enough work to do there, I guess, than to look outside, too far outside those boundaries.
I I hear what you're saying. I think we do have jurisdiction, if you will, to how this appears, right? How this looks.
Well, we can do a lot of jurisdiction all over the place, but you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I I I, my question was really kind of an exploratory question. I think it's really an opportunity, it's it's right on that line. Um, and I, you know, I'm commenting as someone who drives into Ashland from that side from time to time, and and I think there's opportunity there for us as a board to think about it. Um, I don't particularly have a a direction I'm going with this, other than to say that this property is is currently the first thing that um any tourist or um person coming out of town sees. And so that's an opportunity for both the restaurant and the town of Ashland.
Um, Joe, Deepa, you mean, the weigh-in on it this time?
Um, so if you look at Google Map Street View, there is a welcome to Ashland sign literally at the first driveway entrance, when you're going down one thirty-five. I could, I'd share my share my screen, you can see it. It's the white, white and black metal, welcome to Ashland, or it's just typical.
Plastic, yep.
M- municipal sign. Um, you know, I I I, you know, I know for a fact that TJ's, you know, does support and contribute a lot into the town on an annual basis, police force, many other kind of ways. So I I think on this one, I, you know, I would just focus on making sure that this proposal is, you know, safe to code and, you know, as as nice-looking and has as much curb appeal as we can make it, I think. So that's where I would focus. Any any comments there from my perspective?
Yeah, and I and I would agree with that. If if I I I'm not necessarily far from that point. I I think it's all about kind of welcoming folks into Ashland and and helping TJ's as well, because that's a welcoming point, it's an opportunity. Um, so curbside appeal, I think, is a good phraseology for it, and I don't know what that looks like for the developer, and I'm not demanding any particular curbside appeal thing. I think Deepa and Tricia have a lot more design experience to maybe comment on design elements coming into Ashland and what that might look like, what curb appeal might look like. Um, so I'm just kind of bringing our attention to that, because I think it's an interesting point that it's right on that line.
And I think you raise a very interesting view of looking at it, but at the same time, I feel like um from the town point, if you're not having a master plan or kind of a idea of how we want this town to start to grow over time, I think it's a very dangerous situation where we start to take piecemeal decisions. Um, it would be really nice if we had like a blueprint of how we want this town to grow, and every time opportunities arise like this particular one, um, if we can take the opportunity to use it instead of thinking it as in silos, I feel like uh it would be a very dangerous call. Like, as all of us have seen, that Google image of that TJ's building right today, with all that amazing background it has, it's a beautiful picture just by itself, right? Uh, I think it, I I'm I'm sure as the developer himself, they would be very careful in what they put in there, because it's kind of obviously add property value to them and not really do something crappy out there. But um that town sign and things like that, I would, I I mean, as a designer, I would love to see we have like a master plan and ideas before making even that Mcgunkor that we just talked about. Like, what is it that we're looking from big picture from the town point of view versus talking about these piecemeal parcels? And then five years down the lane, another team comes up and says, hey, this is totally off the charts. So um, at least that's how I look at it.
And I I I do think the question about curb appeal is valid, because um, like, I I don't think the the diagram, the black and white diagrams are going to be enough to show us what this permanent eating place looks like. Again, if this during COVID, right, anything goes, you know, it was it was fast, it was whatever works, as long as it, you know, had some degree of safety. But if something is going to be added permanently, then we have to do it as just as if um a new restaurant like Mozzie was asking for something. Um, that things have to be done to the same standards. Now, that doesn't mean the outdoor eating area at TJ's has to look like the outdoor eating area at Mozzie's. There's two completely different eating places. But I I think I'm looking at that same picture on my other screen, if I look like I'm distracted, um, that Deepa was talking about, it's TJ's with the beautiful fog colors behind it, and and it does have some curb appeal of its own. And so how does this addition, you know, fit right into that? So it has to be constructed to match the the curb appeal that that TJ's already has, you know, in it with its own identity. And then I think coupled with that is the is the whole component about safety, just because the parking lot is kind of a free-for-all, you know, when you go in there. And um with more people outside, it we just have to, if we're putting our names on it, we have to make sure it's it's safe to bet to the best of our ability.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I I like the way you phrase it, Tricia, that the curb appeal and the consistency with the current appeal of of TJ's. The beauty of TJ's as is, we wanna honor and preserve and kind of have a better visual of what that looks like. Um, and I'm I'm very much on board with that. Um, so, and I also agree with Deepa that, you know, the last comprehensive plan that was created is is from two thousand and three. Uh, that's a long time ago, and we need another one, and and um I think that will help with future projects. So I I'm I'm not in a disagreement.
I do like the idea that you're using every opportunity, Anna, to kind of think of these things. I think that's a great approach.
I'm I'm getting persuasive here. I'm trying to make sure I plant seeds for our retreat to talk about the comprehensive plan, and this will be example two. So so I I appreciate your picking up on that, Deepa. Um, because I I think each one of these projects is is an opportunity for us to to talk about that and to understand that we actually do have an opportunity with each project to make decisions that impact the whole visual of the town. Um, that's part of our jurisdiction, and and that's why we have, you know, state mandate to release a comprehensive plan, which we need as a board to do. So, um, but I'll move on.
Does um, does any, oh, I was just, there's not too many um people on, I guess, besides us. It must be very exciting tonight. Um, does um, does anyone else on the board wanna comment before we open it up to any public comments? Any final thoughts, I guess, before we?
Just just one, just one question for me. Uh, Peter, to what extent did this get peer reviewed by uh our peer review from a perspective of compliance with uh codes? I'm you, bud.
Excuse me, sorry, I had to grab a bite to eat, I was uh, I was getting a little hungry. Uh, that's why my thing went off. Uh, but no, uh, Joe, uh, there's been no, there's been no uh third-party review regarding stormwater or anything like that.
I didn't say, I didn't say storm stormwater, just just raw compliance with codes and everything else.
Fire department and the code. Uh, this was, I, this was submitted not too long ago, so I haven't had the ability to kind of share this with the fire department and the DPW, but I will.
Would it be normal course to do that?
Yes.
Okay, for for, so for any, for any of the upcoming discussions on this lines we're gonna have, that would be normal, normal course, normal procedure, right?
Correct, yeah, and uh, and obviously, we we're kind of, we're we're getting a look at them, and obviously, we're starting a conversation about this project, and we really haven't had a conversation on this project. But uh, these plans will get sent over to the fire department and, you know, to our building commissioner uh for their thoughts, and and those thoughts will be collected and kind of granted and kind of sent packaged together to the furniture, I would say. Uh, typically, with outdoor seating, the fire department is the is the one, the department that really gets involved, uh, because they they told they want safety, you know, their real safety measures. Um, uh, and I know with outdoor seating, you know, there were safety measures regarding cars, traffic, uh, patio heaters, I mean, we've all, we know those have obviously, you know, have been adopted with COVID, uh, lighting, any anything of that nature.
What about as far as structure, like um, as far as the safety that we talked about with cars running into the wall?
So from a safety point, um So from a safety point, um, you know, I would, we would have to put a condition together that the plan would have to be, you know, certified by a structural engineer. And then kind of go from there. And also, I think, you know, I know, uh, uh, other projects such as one twenty-eight Main Street, we put the bollards in next to the area around the, uh, that would have bugged up to the, uh, to the play area, uh, across, you know, at that church. And so.
I'm sorry, where, where was that? I didn't hear where you said.
Uh, one twenty-eight Main Street. So one twenty-eight Main Street is part of that condition, there was four feet bollards put in. Uh, they're four feet below and they're four feet off, you know? And so I know Joe and Dale were a part of that process. But those, those bollards are put, you know, six feet on center, uh, and that was to protect cars from going into that fence, which obviously there's kids choking playing on the other side. So regarding safety and any measures, you know, I think I can, I can talk to, you know, George offline to see if maybe that's a direction that the applicant would like to go in, to do the installation of that bollards, you know, along that line to protect, which I think is going to hit on the point that Joe had.
Well, so, so I, I don't want to pre-conclude that we need bollards. You know, if, if, if people who are experts say that this will stop and will provide what protection we need, then that's fine. My, I was not going that we have to have them. I was just asking that question. Um, if it does go down the path of bollards, the only comment I have is let's not go with blaze orange, yellow. Let's go with like a, so another color that blends in a little bit more. But, uh, but anyway, yeah, that's it for me.
Yeah, again, I think, I think it's about looking at at TJ's and the site as a whole and how it, how it operates. I, I think there maybe is going, there's going to be some. These, it's not like they're short on space. They have a lot of space to work with to kind of question what's there now and make sure the traffic flow and the curb appeal. It's, it's kind of an opportunity to make that parking lot work a little better without repaving the whole thing. I'm not asking, you know, for that. But to, with this new element, you know, how are things changing? And, and to look at it in a little different way to maximize curb appeal, safety, um, flow through the site, you know, so.
And I think as a team, um, maybe this adds to our retreat program, but I think as a team, we should look at what are other towns doing? I'm sure this is not a new thing that's coming up in Ashland. What are the steps that we need to take moving forward? If there are more projects coming in the line, what are those parameters that we start to define? Um, so that we are consistent as we are looking at other projects as well and not decide project by project basis on some of the big parameters, especially the life safety ones.
Yep, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, I know. From a life sa- safety standpoint, these plans are going to be shared with the, uh, fire department and the building, building office.
So and I, I had one more, one more thought for George. And George, I, I mean, I, I've been to TJ's many times as a motorcycle rider, lots of motorcyclists go there. And I can tell you, it would be thoughtful, I think, to think about motorcycle parking at that restaurant, um, so that the, it's a lot safer for motorcycle riders, and I think it's going to be safer for, for cars as well. Because that's, that's a really attractive restaurant for motorcycle riders from all over Metro West. During the season, I've been there many, many times. Love it. Like I said, almost dropped my bike. I know people who have. Um, and I think everybody will be much more happy, not only motorcycle riders, more business for, for TJ's that way too. But also safety as far as the non-motorcycle riders who get really annoyed when the, the motorcyclists come in, right? Um, and start stealing those spots and parking. So I would love to see dedicated motorcycle spots, and I think that will be really attractive. To, to TJ's, uh, visual, if you will, to the character of that restaurant, just something I'm throwing out there.
Okay.
I don't see any, no, I don't, I don't see any hands up from the public, and I don't see much public out there, so.
I don't know who's Chris's house is. Somebody is there. In Peabody.
Yes.
It's somebody on the phone. So do we want to make sure there's no public comment?
Well, I think they would put their hand up. Um, so, um, I think we're looking to continue this then, Peter, right? Until.
Yes, we can continue this to the twenty-four.
Twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth.
Is that going to be enough time? For, okay. To, to start looking at those things more deeply. Right? Can I have a motion to continue this public hearing until October twenty-eighth?
Sure.
So moved.
Or, okay. I, I'll second that. Do, do, do we, do we want to kind of spec- specify what the two items are? It sounds like we're looking at code and safety, and also the visual from the street view, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can, uh, it's not part of the motion, but we can certainly summarize that we're looking for, um, both aesthetics and safety, I guess.
So I, I seconded Joe's motion.
All right, roll call vote.
Deepa, I'm gonna die.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, I.
Joe Rubertone, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. It's four zero zero. All right, and thank you again, Mr. Connors.
Thank you.
Want to stick around for the rest of our meeting?
Uh, no, thank you.
You sure?
He's a wise man.
Absolutely.
Somebody in Peabody thinks we're really.
But I, I can kind of follow Jameson.
I mean, somebody in Peabody thinks we're fascinating. So are you sure about that, George?
I'm not sure he's all it either.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, is, um, Peter, are we going to discuss the designer review committee nominee? Is Kathy Rooney able to?
Kathy Rooney, I did email Kathy late in the day. I had not spoken to her. Uh, however, and I, and I have not received any emails from Kathy either. So I believe we'll just push that off until the next week.
So put that on for the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Do we need to, it's not a public hearing, so we don't.
It's not a public hearing. We don't have to discuss.
Okay. Oh, oh, wait, uh.
We have twelve.
I actually skipped twelve Pond Street, yeah, so sorry. I was, I'm looking at the old agenda. So was that a continuation, um, or it's just a discussion?
Uh, it's just a discussion, I would say.
Okay. All right, you want to?
This is not a public hearing, uh, but sure. So I, I know it's been a long time since we take a, taken a look at this, but twelve Pond Street, uh, concerning the exterior colors. And I believe this may, I don't know if you were part of our last discussion, uh, regarding this. Our project has gone back quite a ways. However, the developer who's, who's, uh, was the iPhone, who's Charlie Zamudo who joins us tonight, uh, has developed twelve Pond Street, uh, as it was permitted. And, uh, I can say that uh, after visiting the site this week, the landscaping has been implemented in the parking area, has been identified, the curb, and I think things are really kind of trending in the right direction out there. Uh, however, the last time we met, um, our discussion really revolved around the doors and the windows in the front of the building. And Mr. Zamudo has installed, uh, everyone except one, which I know is a backorder, but the last item which we really have to nail down on this project is the exterior colors. I know the planning board and Charlie has kind of, they've kind of gone around, and we've looked at many renderings and how things are and, and, uh, what, what has been proposed, I would say, over the last year, year and a half. Actually, two years, because I believe I, it's been that long. So Mr. Zamudo had submitted some new samples and some new materials, uh, regarding the, uh, facade, especially the brickwork on the lower level, which is the commercial level. And that is what, the party package, I believe, I emailed this out to all the planning board members. But at this, uh, instance, I will hand it over to Charlie, uh, unless, uh, I missed anything, um, please let me know. But does any, we, we're all plenty more members able to receive that attachment that was, uh, regarding the exterior drawing? So at this point, uh, if anybody has any questions to Charlie, uh, please, um, feel free and, and, and step up and, and, and ask them. But at this point, I'll hand it over to Charlie to walk us through the, uh, the colors and the renderings and the design. Uh, and Charlie, please let me know if you want me to bring those up on my computer.
Yeah, can you pull them up, Pete?
Please hold on a sec, as I try to, as I grab them. Nice, happy cleanup. Charlie, just want to give the board an update on how things stand out at twelve Pond Street while we're waiting.
So the parking lot will be paved hopefully next week or the week after the landscaping is done. We, we spoke with the people with the state, and they told us not to do the sidewalks, because there's going to be an elevation change, and they're not sure what the elevation change is yet. So we're waiting for them to determine what the elevation of the new sidewalks on Pond Street is going to be. So we're waiting to hear back from them, and I know they're out there shooting grades, and they had a, a meeting last week, but they haven't got back to me with anything yet. So as soon as they tell me what the elevation is, we can put the sidewalks in on both sides. The interior of the building, I actually called the building inspector today to see if he could do a walkthrough and inspect the building so we could insulate it. So we're just waiting to hear back from him to see when he could get out there and we'll start the insulation.
Is that for both the residential and the commercial units?
Uh, so the, we're going to start on the top floor, work our way down. The residential is all set. The sprinkler company is still working on some plans for the garage level because of the, uh, town of Ashland hires an outside consultant. And we, we had to move the water main from the left side of the building to the right. So he just wanted new calculations on that, which are being drawn up now.
Did you mean the residential units are complete, or they're ready to be inspected for insulation?
They're ready to be inspected for insulation.
Okay.
So Pete, can you go to that picture you just had up with the front rendering? I don't know.
Yes, thank you so much for the update, Charlie. Uh, so I am going to go to the first picture, which is here. And Charlie, the microphone is yours. Just let me know when you want to move the next slide.
All right, so we got on the front of the building at the main entrance, we, we picked two different colored bricks. Now, the bricks that we submitted, the color varies from brick to brick. So if you, when you look on the plan, the center of the entranceway is more brown on the picture, and then to the left and to the right of that, the bricks are much grayer. So we, we wanted to highlight the entrance of the building with a different color brick. And then have all the commercial be the, the gray brick, where the residential is the brown brick. And we were, we repainted the, on the backside of the building where the daca color is. We took that daca color and put it on the two bump outs in the front to eliminate that lighter color, which has a very greenish hue to it. So this is the best way, the best look we could come up with, with the paint colors. Pete, can you show the side of the building, please?
We lost Peter, didn't we?
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, well.
Do you want me to try to share? I've got those renderings.
And I think you're muted. I think you're muted. Still muted.
How's that? No?
We can hear you, Charlie. Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, so on the, um, Trish, when we had the walkthrough at the site visit, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we, we found the brick that would be the best grade, but when you get the samples, there's like, the bricks are all different colors. It's not like one solid gray color. So the samples I submitted to PETA is going to be a variation of that color, and then the same with the, the daca color as well.
Yeah, it almost seemed like.
It didn't look so great, but if you see the, the pictures, I took pictures of the board that was in the store. And in the pictures that I submitted, you can see that it's like.
Oh, so they did, so it did come on a board. I was talking to Peter about that, that it's strange to see one, to see one brick.
So for me to get that board, it would have been a huge board, and it would have been heavy, because there's a lot of different variations of the colors. But I emailed in the, the drawings, there should be a, a picture of the boards that the, the store had. That would show that it's more different color grays than that.
So are you proposing, and hopefully Peter will be back with us. There he is.
Sorry, my internet just totally threw disconnected, so.
Are you?
I apologize.
Are you going to be able to get the drawings back up, Peter? So are you proposing, Charlie, that the whole building is going to be painted?
So we're gonna.
Except for the white, I assume.
So we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate only the, that greenish hue color, which is the bottom of the building and the bump outs on the front. So the, the top part of the building is the daca brown, which is much nicer. We're going to paint the, in the front of the buildings, the bump outs are going to be the daca brown color to match the sides.
Okay.
So, um, Pete, can you show us a side view, please?
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, because you have some of the darker brown color at the top of one of the dorm, the gables right now, right?
Okay, so let me, there was two different variations that we sent. Okay, so in the front of the building, we're going to put the daca brown on the, the bump outs. So on this particular picture, it shows us reversing the colors, running the gray around on the side of the building, and then the daca brown on the bottom. And when we spoke, you wanted us to present a couple of different options, where we could see them. So there, there's another option as well. So this one here is the daca, actually. Not this one. Is there another option, Pete? All right, so this is the front of the building. The front's going to be all gray, except for the bump outs.
No, but when you say gray, Charlie, are you talking about the gray that's on there right now, or the gray that was the paint sample, the natural gray number one that is listed at the bottom of that drawing?
Okay, so the, the, so the, the gray and this brown, I didn't have any more samples, so we tried to match it as best we could to, to bring you the samples, but it's whatever that, the gray that's on the building now is close to this gray.
No. You mean in the front?
Yeah.
No, it's not even close, Charlie. I took a picture of it today. It's much, much darker.
So I, this is just printed on paper, so this ain't that. Did you see the, the colors, the color sample?
Yeah, I mean, the, the color on the front of the building today is a dark, a medium gray, let's call it, right?
Yep.
So today I went into town hall, and there were these paint samples there. There were the actual paint sample, like if somebody painted a piece of cardboard or whatever, right?
Yep.
And then Peter got out the original samples of the Hardy Ward, and they're not even close to the same. Am I right, Peter? I didn't take a picture of them together. So I thought, I thought you were going to paint the front of the building to be this natural gray color.
No, we're going to, the original gray that's on the building. So the paint store just made samples off little chips, and the girl that did the drawings used those chips, so this, they, she went to Home Depot just to make color match. They might have screwed up the color on the little samples. But, so the, the front of the building's gray is going to stay gray. Then the bump outs are that lighter color beige with the greenish hue, which will go to the daca tan color that's on the rest of the building. And then if you look at the brick samples, you can see on the bar, on the lower, they have the more gray in it, and one has more brown in it, kind of to match those colors.
Yeah, I don't know. How, how many, did everyone get over there to see the samples? Or just me?
So there's going to only be two colors on the building. Well, actually, the trim will stay white, and then the, it's going to be the, the tan and the gray color.
So Tricia, I have not had a chance to, to go in to take a peek, but I can, I can make time in the next couple of business days to make it happen if, you know, if that's possible, Peter.
Yeah, I think, um.
But those, those two colors should be matched to the Hardy.
No, I. No, I, they're, they're not even close. They're not even close. Um, I'm Charlie, I'm, I'm sorry. I was, I was just there today. I wish I would have taken. I'm looking at a picture on my screen of the brick samples and the paint samples. I took a picture of those. But I didn't take a picture of them next to the hardy plank samples that Peter also had. So that's what, that was my confusion. Peter and I were looking at the renderings and we were looking at these colors. And we thought you were painting. We thought you were painting the whole front of the building to be these colors, which we thought, oh, they look really nice.
I'll paint the front of the building then. I don't, I mean, whatever, I just wanna get the colors, the, so the city's happy and get it done and move on.
It's, it's been really hard to get clear information and, um, and I have to say, like, I like this. Like, that, this, this brick that's being picked out, it's really hard to tell with the sample, like, because you're only seeing one brick.
Yeah.
But that little color diagram is, is really, really nice. I think that I really like. I think those are, those are nice matches, like.
Alright, so we'll use those colors to paint the building.
I think, uh, Trish, what's going on is the actual gray that's there in that building is cooler. And this palette is nice and warm, so it complements one another. Um, and I think that's the issue, right? It's also, when you're looking at it on a screen, it's harder. So I think, in reality, I think it seems to be fighting because obviously what you have cooler and the warmer tones. This is a great presentation because it's kind of tying in. Oh, we all do that magic, right? We love Photoshop's and we love how do we warm it up. And I think that's what's going on here versus the reality. Because I drove by 12 Pond Street last week or maybe two days back. And I know that, that gray is way cooler than what's right now here.
Yeah.
Do you guys like the, the, the colors that are on this palette? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just answering for myself, but I'd let someone else answer.
I like the renderings. I think this looks great. I like the gray brick veneer. I like the beige brick veneer. If you, if this is what you're delivering, Charlie, I like it. I think it looks great.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll just stick with those colors. I'll paint the whole building over. I'll make it so it's those two colors.
Please, everybody else should talk. I just, I.
Tricia, is what you saw consistent with these ren, I'm, I'm just kinda, I'm trying to understand what, what's happening, so.
This, so, stay on this rendering there, Peter.
Yep.
So go ahead, Anna.
So is what you saw in town hall consistent with the, the colors here that you're seeing in this rendering?
Yeah, they're pretty consistent with this rendering. The, the paint samples, like actually. It, in town hall, there's a paint sa, a little, a little paint sample, like someone actually painted it with a brush, right?
Yep.
And, um, and, and Peter printed out the, um, where it showed the paint and the, and the brick. And we held the paint sample up to the printout and it was actually pretty darned close. We were impressed by how close the printout was able to match the sample in real life, which is extremely hard to do. Um, so then we liked this. But when I drove by Pond Street today and took pictures, cuz I was taking picture of the lands, I was snooping around, Charlie, taking pictures of the landscaping. Didn't go on the property. Um, but it's not what's on the, it's, it is painting the whole thing. It's not. The, the, like I said, these colors are very different than what's there.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, thank you for connecting the dots for me, Tricia. That, that's my reaction. I'm loving the, I'm loving these pictures, but it's not what's there in person. So, in other words, the sample in town hall and this rendering is consistent. But it's not consistent with reality of what's actually on the street. So, thank you for catching me up, Tricia, because I did not go to town hall. So I, I couldn't understand the connection between the sample and what we're looking at, and now I do.
So Trish, if you guys all agree and ladies agree, with those two colors, I'm gonna just paint the building with those two colors. And we can get this, you know, straightened out.
There's, there's a, just two other things I wanna mention because when I was looking at this today. That, um. Um, wish I could put have both these images on one screen, but if you look at the middle row of windows. Right on, on this rendering. Actually, you know, why don't you go back to the rendering that we, that we really like of the new colors there, Peter? I don't know what page that was on. Maybe, see, can I share my, let me share my screen briefly. Can you turn that on for me?
Yep. You have the ability to share this screen.
Okay, let me, um. Okay, I don't know. Are you seeing meeting minutes or are you seeing the?
Nope, I see it.
Okay. I got two screens going, okay. Can you see both images? Okay, so here are this, these are the samples that we saw. So these are the two painted samples. And these are the two bricks. This is the, the gray brick and this is the browner brick. But like Charlie was saying, it's, and, and what the other, the print shows is that the bricks aren't consistent. They're, they're different shades. So these bricks seem to be like the darkest representative of what a brick would be. And, and then other bricks would get lighter from here, at least that's what's shown on the.
Some are gonna be lighter and some are gonna be darker.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be hesitant to have them get too much darker because. You know, so that's why it's a little hard. It might be nice to get those heavy boards so that we could see it. Um, or just have them at the site. You could just bring them at the, to, you could bring them to 12 Pond Street. We can look at them there.
Well, the thing is, they're up on a wall at the, in the, if you wanna meet me at the, the place, we can meet at the showroom.
Where's the showroom?
Um, floor of decor, wherever, I don't know if there's one close to you. They sell that on their brick.
Hmm, um. I'll have to look. But the other thing I was noting then on the elevations is that this is, um, what I took today. And just when we flip back to the rendering, right, that. This, this line here, this white band. Um, just is a lot thinner on here. Um, on the rendering, on the renderings, we saw this white band actually goes all the way to the window. And I'm not recommending we do that, but we have kind of these vents or whatever sticking out now. That we see. And then also look at the, the overhang here. And its placement. Just, just note those two things. And if you switch back, Peter, to your rendering. Which I don't think I have a. Are you able to do that, Peter?
Trish, didn't we go through all this before at the last meeting and that this meeting was only for color, paint color samples?
Well, I know we went through and we approved like the doors. But we're looking at.
Nothing's changed on the building since the last time you were out there.
Yeah, I know, Charlie. So maybe, so maybe it doesn't matter. I mean, if the, if the building gets to be a lighter color. I guess what, I guess what's kind of, um, and, and I really want this to, to wrap up well, I do. I think it's just, um, part of a continued kind of frustration is that the renderings we see just never seem to match up with what we're told or shown. It, it's really frustrating. I know you're frustrated by it too. It's hard to, it, it doesn't seem like any of your designers actually visit the site.
Peter, would you be able to switch back to the renderings that Tricia, you can see? You're, you're muted.
I'm sorry, uh, Trish, if you can stop sharing your screen.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
I'll try to remember this. I think it's a good point, Tricia, to kind of be aware of what, what's actually there versus what we're. But I'm also hearing, I'm also hearing a willingness to, to repaint the whole thing.
Well, the, the issue, the issue was Anna, that, um, there was a condition. In an, in the original decision that said it had to come before the planning board to show us the final colors.
Hmm.
But the final colors went up without that. So we went back to, un, unfortunately.
We, what we tried to do in a, is match, plans were presented to the zoning board and approved. And we tried to match the hardy plank colors as close as we could, could to the approved plans. Which the colors weren't that great on the drawings. So we did our best to match the colors that were on the plans. And then we went in front of the board and said, you know, we all agree it doesn't look good. We'd repaint the building. Then Trish, Pete, myself and, um, I'm sorry, what's your name? That we're out at, we did a walkthrough at the site and we all, we were talking about bricks. And Trish came up with a real good idea to put the grayer color bricks on the bottom. So we've done everything to try to accommodate. Everybody's, you know, talk, going back and forth, picking colors and talking about colors. It's not like we purposely put the building up with the run, like with colors that we just made. Yeah.
I mean, I, I think where I'm at is, I think the rendering is warm and, and lovely. And we just need to get the reality to match the rendering that we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
If you guys like the colors that we submitted, we'll just paint the whole building over it. I don't care about painting the whole building over. We just wanna get it done and, you know, it's getting cold out, finish the thing up and get out of town.
Trish, you're right. There are, there are problems with how this rendering is presented versus the reality. Like the window frame, framing around that, the spacing on that second level windows are so different from reality. So that starts to kind of distract you from kind of the overall massing. There's kind of a rhythm on this elevation that you're seeing. In reality, that's not what's happening, right? Where that kind of that, uh, slow portico is to the entry. The three windows are way closer in reality versus what's shown on this image. The frame on those dormer windows have a larger white band that's happening in reality. So it starts to distract you in so many different ways. So I think the color is, you're losing track of the color unfortunately because these rend, renderings are deceptive. Because it's not really matching what's happening.
Yeah, that's.
But we went through this in the last meeting. We had Jim redo the plans. And I don't know if Jim sent the plans to the, the, the girl that did the colors for the right, the right plan. I mean, this was, this meeting was just for the colors. That's so, he, we, I don't, I didn't look at the plan to see if it's matching exactly what was out there. But last time in front of the board, Jim had to redraw all the plans to make it to what was right cuz his plans were wrong. The, the, what's happening is the renderings of the building and the construction plans. I don't know if you remember this, were two different plans. We built the, we built the building according to the construction plans. But the renderings, the color renderings were different. So then what, last time we went in front of the board, Jim fixed all that. And the plan we presented today is just for the color. It's not for the dormers or anything like that. It, it was just to get colors on the, the paper, which these might be the old plans that are incorrect. But it was just whatever plans we had, the woman worked off of that to change, to put the colors on there.
Yeah, but you have, you have to understand, Charlie, that it, it, at least, you know, it, to a designer, it's all interconnected. You know, it's.
Trish.
Yep.
Just tell me, you want me to tear the buildings down? I'll tear them down.
No, I don't. Charlie, I don't. I don't.
You know, you met me at the site.
I did. I did.
I'm not trying to be an ass, but it's like frustrating.
I know.
Project's taking time, but this town is, everything in this town has like been one thing after another. And it's, I don't understand.
Hold on a second. The, the only thing, the only, I mean, the only.
We went through this about the renderings before. This is only for the colors this meeting, correct, Pete?
Well, it's, it would be nice to get the, am I, um, mute?
No.
I think the number one thing is, we've been at this for so long and there's so many renderings. Yes, this is about the colors of the building. I don't disagree with you. But it'd be nice, I think, and I think it, is to make sure that the colors are on the right rendering that we approved. You know, and so, uh, I personally think the rendering that was submitted from, looks great. These colors are good. You know, I went out to the site, you know, and, and, and I think they're very well thought of and, and they work together. Um, is there a different gray on the building today? Yes, there is. That is not rep, that, that's not the same gray that's represented in these room. Um, the last meeting, we talked about and we approved the doors, right? And we all kind of thought it'd be really cool that you have these roll-up garage doors, um, that are, that. Will allow folks to interact with the street and the restaurant and the taqueria that you, you. Yeah, that Charlie, I know you were proposing to develop and or kind of install in the building. So, um, that's where we were last time.
So I mean, i- if I could, what I'm hearing is that this rendering that we're looking at, we all like. This page two of seven. We like it. We like the colors, right? All that we're asking you to do is to, to, to take an actual reality check of, of what you actually built. And show us these colors again on the actual reality of what's there, rather than this sort of idealistic. Rendering that's not accurate. And I, I thought it was really helpful that Tricia and Deepa pointed out. The differences between reality versus this picture. Um, and it sounds like we're, we're all in agreement that the colors are beautiful. We just wanna see them. We wanna make sure that we understand the context of this color scheme in actual reality. Right?
Yeah, I, I just don't want to be. I don't wanna be, I, I don't wanna be disappointed that once these colors and this group brick go on the building. It doesn't look like the rendering, you know, and I think we need to be aware of that. Because we can like these colors and like the rendering, but it's not the building that's on site. So I wanna be, I wanna have a clear picture of, this is what the building actually looks like. Doesn't even have to be all the sides, just the front, you know?
Is there a way to literally take that photograph of the actual building? And, and somehow use, you know, the power of. Whatever software designers use to, to, to put the color on, on the actual photograph of the actual building from the front. Is there a way to do that? That's not too complicated?
Yep.
I don't know. Is there, you know this better than me?
Yeah, I mean, um, I mean, I don't think the changes.
You're gonna make me go through another meeting and not finish outside the building before it snows?
You, you don't seem willing to look at the things that are taking, you know, you told me you wanted to make the building beautiful. You wanted it to be a good looking building.
Did you, did you, if you look at the landscape plan, right, and look what I planted, I planted so much more stuff. Than the, is in the plan because I want it to be beautiful. The, the town doesn't, you guys don't understand that I care about the building more than you do. And I want it to be beautiful. And it's like, this is my building. I want it to fit in the neighborhood. I want it to be perfect.
Then, then why aren't you listening to what I'm, to, to the, the issues that I have?
Because if you like the, the, these paint colors, I'll put them up and we'll see how they look and then we'll come look at them. If you don't like it, I'll paint it again.
But it also wasn't, I, I was trying to show you a few things that weren't about the paint colors.
No, I understand that. We know the, what's, the, the building is built, the, and it's like.
I think it's because from, I mean.
We love the building and we put colors on and wait another month before I gotta come back. And then like, it's not something that's gonna happen in twenty minutes. I can go out there and paint a section of the wall, you know, tomorrow and you, you guys can drive by and look at it and like it or not.
I mean, honestly, as I'm hearing this, if, if you're willing to repaint again, I, I actually, I like that idea. I like the idea of having you, this is my thought. There seems to be a disconnect between reality and, and sort of renderings that's not just today. So I actually like the idea of allowing you to paint it and then show us the result. And then we can see if it matches not only your renderings but our expectation. If you're willing to repaint again, I, I have, I see no issue with that because then we can truly double check. That you've met your, your rendering or your, your vision. Um, so as long as, what I'm hearing is if the applicant is willing to repaint as many times as necessary to satisfy. Keeping a promise, if you will, to the rendering that's being presented. I don't see any problem with that, of allowing the applicant to start painting and show us the reality so we can actually check it to what's being promised.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's about doing a mockup. You know, that's why they do mockups. That's why they're doing one at the public safety building. That's why I'm. I assume they'll do one at Minna's. I think they're going to.
My, my worry is if we wait a few weeks and then we get a new picture or a new rendering that looks more accurate. To what's there structurally and we approve it and then it gets painted and we don't like it. Because it's not what we were promised. We're gonna run into the same issue again.
You know, a mockup is reality, mark, a mockup is real building, real materials, onsite, in real life, real paint, real brick. So I mean, that could be done on part of the building, you know, we don't have to paint the whole thing and then say, oh, nope, don't like it, you know? We just paint a little part of it, you know, and, and take a look at it. But, but like I said, I don't think we have problems with these colors. You know, I mean, it would be nice to see a. The real sample of the brick, I mean. Or, or have them, you know, make a sample of brick, you know, or, or.
No, could we find a middle ground where the developer starts painting now, right? Um, and, and don't finish the entire thing and let us see it. Is that, is that a compromise position that might work?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with these colors. That, that's not my question. My question is the other things that I was trying to describe to Charlie that he doesn't, he doesn't wanna do. For the building.
We did, Trish, we went through this whole thing before Jim drew up the plans. And we presented them at the last meeting. I don't know this plan, if he sent the girl the wrong CAD file. And, but this was just to do the paint colors and to get the paint colors approved. I mean, we've been to the building, we know what the building looks like. We, we all walked around the building. We all agreed about the paint colors and the brick color, like we didn't agree the finished ones, but we agreed we didn't like. And we were gonna fix them. And this, this meeting was just for that, but it's now it's getting. The, the picture of this ain't the right picture.
The way I'm hearing it is that Trisha's picking up on, on structural issues that were not supposed to be there, that, that do have an impact on color. Because color is about dimension, color is about perspective, right? So there are, they're absolutely interconnected. They're not, they're, they are interconnected. I mean, I, I, I do not consider myself to be design professional by any means, but. I understand that point. Could I, could I be educated, Tricia and Deepa, as to what the differences are between reality? You talked about the windows and you talked about the. The awning, I guess. Can, can we go back to that slide? Can you, can you? Are there other? And can you speak to how the color scheme in your mind is, it could be more accurate if we had a more accurate rendering?
First of all, when you print colors on paper, it's never gonna be the same as what the building looks like. There's no way possible to ever make it look like because of the skilled color. And the ink, ink printer is totally different from paint and being inside and outside, there's all these variations. Things to change the, the complexity of the paint colors. So the, the only real way is to go there, let me paint a sample of the building. And you guys can all drive by and if you don't like it, I'll repaint it again.
Could we, could we paint the section that concerns Tricia and Deepa the most? And from what I understand, it's that. It's that middle section, right, Tricia? The.
Here's, here's the issue, and I appreciate your summary Anna, because it's, it's speaking someone else's language and I, I, it was a good summary. Um, what my issue is, and I think Deepa. Sees this as well, is that it, it's not just about the color of this. And the color of this and the color of the brick, which I think we all like on the rendering. We're saying, hey, they look good, right? It's, it's, it's kind of the, it's also, it's about this. Right? This little. Let me finish, let me.
No, my, my battery's going dead.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
If it dies, just hang tight, I gotta run.
It, it, because this band, if we call this a band, right? Here's like a white band and here's a white band. On the rendering, we are looking at the one that we like, the one we think that looks great. This white band goes all the way down to the top of the window. Now, I'm not saying that we have to do that on here. Because some proportions have changed. From those drawings to this built structure, right? Some things have changed in process. But what I am wondering is if this white band can at least be brought down to hide these things. So that this white band gets thicker. We still would see gray paint up here. It'd be a lighter gray paint. But my suggestion is can there be one more line of trim?
The siding, the one line of siding, like.
I, I'm just, I'm just not. I, I just can't guarantee that's not gonna just look weird.
I don't know. Trish, we built the building according to the plans we have. Now we're gonna. This, this whole meeting, we went through this before about design and everything.
I know Charlie, but you know, you're. The wrong set of drawings to the. All right, we're trying to work with you.
Yeah, but the, the, we already went through this and we're going through it again. This meeting was for paint colors. Now it's about bands. Everything else. I don't understand why you, you. I don't know. Building town, I won't build in town anymore. Trying to run me out of town, I'll leave. I don't care. Buy the building off me. I don't care.
Let's keep, let's, I ask you to keep a cool head on this meeting.
So, so.
I know, but it was, this meeting was about paint colors. Now it's about something, it's about a.
So Charlie, we're, we're actually getting towards. The connection between color, right? And, and the structural design elements that are not what, not what. Was expected because there was a disconnect, right? So rather than kind of pointing fingers at each other. Why don't we focus on finding something that works, right? And so what I hear, because I'm not a designer, so I wanna make sure I understand. What I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that, that. I don't even know what, know what to call it. That, I, I think of it as a horizontal boundary, if you will, that was very. Um, strongly visually present, right? And it's not there anymore. Essentially, and that shifts how we look at those colors, Charlie. It just does. There's no way around it. So we have to talk about it, right? And Trisha's proposing something that will make that more prominent, which is what we expected. Right? And you're saying, I don't wanna. Put up more material. I just wanna paint. And, and so. Let's keep going in that conversation rather than pointing fingers and, and pointing blame because that's really. It is about color and how it's viewed by somebody like me who's not a designer on the street, how they're gonna look at your building.
Is just a witch hunt. And it's getting out of control.
Charlie, I asked you not to point fingers and keep a cool head.
It can't be a witch hunt, Charlie, because I was not involved in any of this. I know. I know nothing about your project.
I know, listen, I know you're new to the board and there was a lot of problems with the drawings and all that stuff. But we worked this out the last time. Now it's being brought back up again and it's just like. Everybody's.
But it's being brought up.
Having fun, like laughing at me, like to torture me to the, about this building.
I'm, I'm not laughing. I'm trying to find a compromise.
It's just becoming a big joke and it's like.
It's, it's not, Charlie. It's, it's not, it's, you're see, you're saying things that just aren't true. I told you this on site. This is, this is what happened on site and it, and it's just not, it's, it's.
Because it's like, every time you see me, you wanna, this is wrong, that's wrong. And I, we went through the plans and we built exactly what the plans show. The renderings are, are different. Yes, we all agree to that. And the, the plans were submitted and accepted by the town. We built exactly what the, what the town had. The plans for. I didn't try to pull wool over anybody's eyes.
Charlie, again, nobody's pointing fingers here.
This meeting was only to pick paint colors. Now it's about the trimming, right? And all this stuff. It's like.
No, last time what we did is that so that you could move forward.
Yeah.
We approved the, the win, the, all the garage doors. Right? We approved those. And I believe the color of the. Of the entry roof.
Yeah.
So that you could get those things done. I believe that's what we did last time.
And Trish, and Jim redrew all the plans to make a match and we submitted them. The paint, the, the plans that we, we, we're only, we weren't even, it was just to get paint colors on paper for you. So you could approve the colors for tonight. Isn't that correct?
I think we were always looking at colors and materials. Colors and materials.
I don't know. I don't know. I guess, so Trish, you tell me what you want me to do.
I'm trying, Charlie.
What, to rip the building apart, redo all the trim?
So Charlie, it feels like you're making it personal between you and Trisha.
No, it is personal. It is personal.
Maybe we should, should we just hold this and, and talk about this?
Table it. Yeah.
I, I think we, I think we need to because I don't think it's a huge, I, I, I'm not trying to, to tear down the building.
Trish, you've got a personal thing against me. Maybe it's. Torture and it's torture and it, this should not be allowed, right? We're supposed to work together.
Time out, Charlie. Let me. We are trying to work together. And Charlie, you're flying off the handle.
Matter what I do, I'm wrong. No matter what I do, I'm wrong.
Okay, I'm totally new to this and I just try to, to help kind of reach compromise and ask you questions that are perfectly.
Listen, no, I know you're new and it's fine.
Personal to Trisha, you are ignoring that. You're, you're not, you're not, you're not conversing with us. And so. You know, I would propose that we, that we wrap it up if you cannot keep it cool, just like Trisha had suggested, like, can you?
The whole point is to, to fly off the hand, make me fly off the handle when the meeting was only for paint colors tonight. And now it's about. All different.
Uh, Charlie, Charlie. Tricia Kendall. Does not do things to try to make you fly off the handle, okay? Like, she, she's not a malicious person, okay? I understand you're frustrated, but it's not fair what you're saying about Trisha. So.
But she's, she doesn't like me for some reason.
You need to go back and look at the tapes of when we were approving this project, because you will see that I supported it. I know, but. Look at the tapes of twelve Pond Street to get it approved and you will see that I supported the project.
Everybody wants the building finished, but nobody wants me to finish it. It goes to the same with the, the whole fire.
Charlie, we were just talking about you painting this thing as a sample. That's finishing it. That's moving towards finishing it. So that's not fair either. Instead of having a conversation about starting to the painting, you've made this personal. That's what you're doing right now.
Because it keeps going, uh, she doesn't like the trim. Architects that don't like each other, like their designs, they, they're gonna pick the whole thing apart constantly. It's never gonna end.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna come to a compromise, a, a decision tonight and a compromise. Uh, I, I, I truly feel that way and I'm sorry. Does the board, you know, do we wanna table this? Do we wanna ask Charlie to paint the sample of the building and put up some bricks?
I mean.
I, I think we need to move forward on this because I, I agree.
Could we take a short, can we take a short break from this topic, handle some of the administrative things and come back if Charlie's still here and, and he can kinda. Consider cooling it off a little bit and, and giving us a chance to compromise here or to have a conversation.
Pete, Peter. Pete.
Yes, Charlie.
Listen. You, you know, if you're like, if you're an honest person, right? You know this whole thing was about paint colors tonight, right? If you don't wanna say it, don't say nothing. I don't wanna put you in a bad position. Uh, this is, the whole thing is going sideways. And if, if you think, if you say I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But this whole thing was about paint colors. We already went through this before.
Okay, we went over the whole windows and I looked back at the last renderings and, and when we last had this, right? And that was last, that was last in the spring, right?
Yeah.
So we have had many months to come back to the colors and I've asked you over the course of those many months. To say, hey Charlie, what's going on? How's the colors going?
Yes.
And to tell you the truth. I'm happy to pull the minutes back from that last meeting because I think what you're going to find. Is the planning board requested three samples of colors.
Yeah.
And three design building colors, right?
Yeah.
What you're presenting here tonight is one color, right?
Yeah.
And one color portfolio, one color palette, right? So I think the planning board's trying to help and work with you. However, you. Have flown off the handle. Okay, and so time out. I need to finish because number one, Charlie. I hope you don't act like this in, in front of other planning boards and I truly say that. Because it's a sign of disrespect to this board. I've had to say this to you at a number of occasions, right? We are trying to help you out and we are trying to help the town out. I'm very excited about this project and I want you to finish just as much as you want to finish, right? And I think if this project is gonna be a great thing, the town of Ashen is gonna make another doorstep, no welcoming. From Framingham into Ashen and really hold down that corner. And this is gonna be the num, you know, the, the newest investment along Pond Street. As the state has done, i- i- is spending sixteen million dollars to redo that entire street, right? But I wanna make sure that, number one, this planning board is respected. All planning board members, especially the chair, is respected. And that we are all happy and supportive of each other in all our, 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 our applicants. Because. No one is a liar in this, in this conversation, Charlie. And I think we're trying to get to a place to give you the green light. To paint this building. There's been mishaps, there's been hurdles while in this project. And that's where I'm kinda, kinda leaving and. I'm not asking for a rebuttal, Charlie.
I built in a hundred other towns. I don't have these problems. This is like.
I've been a town planner in three other towns. And I'm not gonna lie, I've never had the same issues as I've had with, 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 you know. Output with, with the, the, you know, the, the architect sending the wrong plans, the this, the that, you know, it's been a lot, right? And so.
Yeah.
And. I've, I've tried to always keep it even keel. I think everybody on this planning board tried to keep it even keel and I would ask you to keep it even keel. When presenting to this board and as we have an even and we enter into conversations and we have conversations. So with that said. If, if the, if the board wants to continue on this discussion, it's great. If, if we wanna ask Charlie to paint a sample of the building, I think that would be a, a, a good next step. Uh, but I think, you know, we need to move forward in one direction or the other. Does any bo- board member have any?
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with allowing the applicant or asking the applicant to paint a section. With the understanding that we will come back to this discussion that Trisha started of that prominent. I, I don't know what to call it, Trisha, that to cover those two little spots. Um, I, I think we need to come back to that conversation next time.
Maybe what we can do. Is what I would suggest. Is to paint. A part of the building. Um, you know, maybe, is my screen still being shared? Yeah.
Yes.
You know, maybe it's. This part and this part, right? This, this, these two kind of areas right here. Easy to reach, there's only one floor up, I mean, relatively speaking. In the proposed colors. And if we can get. If we can get a better sample of the bricks, I mean, I really like. The, the image that you're showing. I, I, I love it, you know, it's just. But it, it's hard, it's impossible to see with one brick, so. It, it would be nice to have some assurance that that's what the brick is going to be or, or if part of the brick can. A, a small section can be built or, you know, whatever, if you can. But then we would know before doing the whole thing and making that investment. And once this is painted. You know, maybe this won't, because this is gonna be a lighter gray. Maybe this won't stand out as much. Maybe it would be easier to evaluate more fairly. When the colors are there, when the lighter color is next to the white. Maybe this won't stand out so prominently. That there are these little oddities on it, you know? That, that's. So that, that allows that we're moving forward. We can look at things. In real life. We're not looking at images. We're, we'll be looking at real life things. Is. Is, is that? Uh, helpful? Going both from Charlie, the board, is it a helpful suggestion?
I think it's spot on. No pun intended.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, she's like, just do a little bit, like, don't do too much and let us look at it. We can stand across the street just like this.
Okay, I'll get done next week.
My two cents is there's two kinds of brick colors happening there. Uh, so maybe we should just make sure whichever section you're doing a markup. Uh, so maybe we should just make sure whichever section you're doing a mock-up covers all the colors. Because the rendering right now shows a walkout balcony kind of a thing. Uh, which has got metal railing, which is not in reality happening. So when I'm a designer, I do this for a living, I do it for a thing. Uh, when I pull out colors, paint colors, it is the color of the metals, it's color of all the trim colors. It's the wood, the siding colors, the kind of the roof material. So colors is just not paint colors. It's got all the colors. So whenever whichever section you plan to show us to get your final approval. Make sure all the materials are covered in that section. So that we can see that and not have, again, missing colors from your final, this one.
Yep, it'll be done next week, all of it.
And how are we gonna capture that for the board? Because Tricia did a great service to all of us by taking this photo. So how will that be delivered to us to see?
You're gonna do a site visit.
We, we gotta go look at it. He's gonna put it on the building, Anna.
Okay, so we're gonna do a site visit and that's fine. If we're doing a site visit, I'm just trying to figure out logistically what that means. So Pete, will you coordinate that with us?
Uh, yeah, so number one thing is I can coordinate in number one, a whole planning board site visit. And or, uh, and I'll contact everyone by email. And or, uh, Charlie, whenever this is painted, please email me and then call me. And then I'll alert the board that, uh, you know, either, uh, samples either onsite in town hall. And or you can kind of, uh, set up that site visit if necessary. Uh, if not, all planning board members can swing by and take a look, uh, anytime that seems good.
Okay, I'll have it done next week.
Okay, Charlie, for the record, I want you to hear this. I am not out to get you. I am just trying, I am just trying to work with you. I, I, I thought we had a good, I thought we had a good discussion on, on site the last time. With me, you and Deepa and Peter.
We won't work together ever again, that's.
That's.
Thank you. My phone's gonna die.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right.
So did he, did he just say we'll never work together again?
Yes.
He's right.
Deepa, am I wrong here? What, what, what did I do onsite that day? I mean, that's the last time I saw the man.
Actually, you helped him to move to the next step. Uh, it's very unfortunate that the support he should have gotten from his designer. I mean, it's a two minutes issue. All that the designer had to do is take that photograph, put it as a background and shift the windows. Just take two seconds of the design. So the support he didn't get from his designer, you actually helped to move forward.
His architect is incompetent. His architect has been incompetent the entire time. His architect gave the wrong plans to the people to build the frickin' building. So this.
Tricia, this is not your fault.
Unbelievable.
So we also, I mean, you know, we, I, I'm new, I'm new to this and what I'm hearing is that, you know. I need to pay but more attention at, you know, at these projects as far as like, who are the players designing these things, right? It's not, it's not just a, a smart developer that comes in with a great idea. It's actually, we need to be able to rely on the team behind the developers to actually deliver what they promise.
Yeah, but we should probably just, we probably, um.
Do we need a motion to?
We, to continue this to, can we continue it to an unknown time or do we need to continue it to the twenty eighth or?
I think it, it's not a public hearing, Trish, it's not.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
It's not a public hearing, it's just a discussion. So whenever this comes up next on the agenda, obviously after the agenda. Um, and everything can kind of move down, but, uh, I think it's great that we all support each other with that, on that one.
This is crazy. Cause I really thought I've, I've really thought I've been on his side and helping him, but he obviously doesn't see it that way. So.
Yeah, I think.
Sounds like there's layers of frustration with, that's what I heard as a new person to this.
It's not just this project, actually.
Exactly. It sounds like there's layers and layers of frustration and, and this board got the brunt of it. So, um, because I, I thought we were quite reasonable in getting somewhere. Um, I mean, I was saying, let's paint this as many times as we need. I, I don't know how that's not reasonable. Pete did.
He started out as a painter, so the painting doesn't apparently bother him. That's how he started in business as a painter, so.
So do we need to make a motion? I know we did, we don't need to make a motion for the site walk, but do we need to make a motion for the? The review?
No, I think it's, I think we can let him go and, and paint it and then we can come back to it. It's not a formal public hearing, it's almost a follow-up as, to one of the conditions. Um, and this is, Anna, this is like probably the fifth follow-up we've had to this one condition. Um, over the course of the last year, I would say, so.
Okay.
This one's a deep one, so, um, so yeah, so I think we should just move on to the next item. Obviously Kathy Rooney is not gonna be able to join us.
Let's get through these meeting minutes so we don't have to think about them anymore.
We're just gonna roll through the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes, uh, the meeting minutes I did send out to everybody. Uh, starting with July twenty ninth, uh, from the last meeting. Um, I highlighted all the changes in yellow that I made. And I tried to kind of smooth out those sentences and kind of go back and add some information, so. Um, I'll, I'll leave it up to the board to kind of tell me if I was able to, um. Summarize those points, um, per se into a meeting minutes.
And these, just to clarify, Peter, these meeting minutes were done by, um. Who, someone, um, who, who went back and looked at the tapes carefully, um. Um, what did you say her name was?
So per, so number one thing is minutes are created for this board by a woman named Linda Kane. So Linda, um, works for the town and she transcribes the minutes from our meeting. And there were our, uh, videos that are posted through RAC online. She does a great job and, uh, and, and I really think, and, and, and we wouldn't be able to do this without, I would say. Uh, at the last meeting on the twenty ninth, these, these are the meetings we really kind of dug into some of the sections regarding. Um, the calculations of the parking, we tried to go through that. Um, I personally went through these, um, and tried to smooth out those sentences, leave, you know. Under, being somebody that sat in the meeting, understood the application. And then also, um, had the conversation with you, the planning board, regarding their concerns with the meeting minutes. Um, so I was when I went back, tried to edit it and then I highlighted the one things I edited in yellow, I would say. I have not done that for the other two because we didn't even get that far with the meeting minutes on August twelfth and August sixteenth.
Yeah, so we're looking at the, um. July twenty ninth, if anyone has changes.
I, I reviewed those and I have no changes to July twenty ninth.
I, I thought they were good as well. I mean, maybe a slight word change here or there, but nothing, it was a matter of opinion, so I, not worth it.
I saw them too, other than the fact that some of the font sizes were different during some paragraphs. But that gets too into the weeds, I didn't find anything as well.
I can take care of that, Deepa.
See, see, there's a designer's eye right there.
I get in trouble for that every day.
Joe is, still needs time, I think.
Offset.
Oh, you're offset? Okay.
Yep.
Uh, motion to approve July twenty ninth, ma- meeting minutes as submitted?
They're moved.
Seconded.
And roll call vote?
Bye bye, goodbye.
Anna Testman, it's key, I.
There, Retona.
And Tricia Kendall, I, passes four zero zero. And on to. August twelfth, that was a big one.
So the only change I had is line forty eight, there's a sentence that begin with the applicant explained. Um, I would just ask that that sentence be moved, um, to right before. The Anna Testman, it's key, uh, sentence on line forty six. I just think a quarter of those are off.
Okay, what was that, Anna? I'm sorry.
Sure, no, yeah, August twelfth minutes.
Yep.
Line forty eight, the sentence that begin with the applicant explained. Could we move that one sentence to line forty six, right before the sentence that starts with Anna Testman it's key? Because the way it sits now, it reads as if I'm pointing out that that happened at the site visit. When in fact, I think what happened was that that's an explanation of what the applicant is saying. So I think it needs to be moved. Or rephrased, so that it doesn't sound like that's what happened at the site visit.
Okay.
Can I change my Mr. Winkett to Ms. Winkett, please? Um, that slides anyone?
Yep. That will be Dave and Dara.
I, I, I noted that too, just that one instance, um. Um, I wanted to add in, in the paragraph starting with line sixty six. Um. It's a small thing, but, um, in the first line, Mr. Marshall responded that he. It, it says that he would confirm, but it, the conversation was about, he said he would have to confirm. He has not done the count. So, um. To me, this was implying that he was gonna go back and confirm that yes, that was the, if, if, the fact that they were equal. When that's actually in the longer conversation, that's not what he was saying. He was saying he would have to go back and confirm he has not done the count of the trees. So it could change that he responded that he has not done the count of whether proposed amount of trees, because that's. That's what the point he was making clear. If you need to go back and look at it, you can. And then I wanted to add, um. Oh, and then, then he, um. On, on line sixty eight, I was going to add, taken down, but a substantial number of plants is planned. That was what he had said.
You had sixty eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it was basically, he was basically saying he didn't know, um, the count of the trees and no one had made that count. But that a substantial number of plants was, that their planting plan shows that they were planting a lot of plants. I also wanted to make note in that, um, paragraph that Ms. Christian, this, uh, Chris Nan, sorry. Um, something like asked, and Mr. Marshall confirmed that a new oak tree could be planted. If the existing one is removed. Cause I think that was the seed of that idea or the first time it was mentioned. And it later became a part of our conditions. It's kind of like deepest comment in the next part of that about reusing the oak tree in some way. I think that was the first time that was mentioned and so it was kind of good to note it in the meeting minutes.
Okay.
But if you wanna go back and check that section to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, I can go back.
That's fine with me as well.
I can go back and, I, it's up to the board. I can make those edits on, on the fly and, or I can make those changes and bring them back to the board.
I mean, I think, I, I don't think it would hurt to listen to it again and just make sure those sections are accurate. I mean, are, are we in a rush? I, I know that we need to approve these quickly. Do we have some time? Can we do it? Can we do this on the twenty sixth?
Uh, we can put this on the meeting minutes on, we can put meeting minutes on the twentieth, uh, for our retreat if we want to.
Oh, great. Yeah, could we do that? Could we add it to next week?
We can put it on the retreat and that will be knocked out of the way.
Yeah, then, then, uh, uh, Lakshmi would be that, there to, um, look at that section since it's about her.
Yeah, that's a good plan. Let's do that.
And I'm gonna post that agenda. I'm gonna pass, post that agenda tomorrow, uh, so hopefully, um, I can put that on.
Otherwise, I was good with those.
Uh, I just had, I, this may be just a clarification. The line where it talks about twenty feet moving the building west, nineteen, I think line ninety one. Did that come from the public or was that more a planning board discussion? To me, in my head, it was more a planning board discussion, but not from a public, but I could be wrong. I'd be surprised that was part of a public comment. At least in my head, it was more a planning board discussion versus a public comment.
It was asked, so I can say the planning board asked instead of it.
I think, I think we just don't know because there were people on there that.
Asked.
Were asking things, but I, I can't remember. It could have been part of a back and forth discussion. Can you put it on your list of things to check?
Yes, yeah, I'll look on that. And like, these minutes are somewhere. They don't have, you know, it's a. And the major thing is that someone can pull the common thread out of, of what was happening, what was going to happen. Okay.
All right, so we will wait to approve those. Um, do we need any special motion or can it just be?
Nope, I'll put these on, these will be on the agenda for, uh, the retreat.
All right, and then twenty sixth. Granted, we only wanna spend like thirty seconds on him at the retreat.
On the, for the twenty sixth, on line ninety one, I wanted to add a couple of words, so. Uh, line ninety one, where it says the removal of the tree, I'd like to add the word potential right be, right in front of it. Just that once, just that one word.
Address the removal, the potential of.
Potential removal of the tree. Yep.
Okay.
What line was that on?
Line ninety one. So now we will read, Ms. Testman, it's you proposed and read that addressed the potential removal of the tree.
I don't think I have any. Changes on that one. Oh, actually, the only thing I have was that way on the line one fifty three, the motion was seconded by Ms. But Ms. No, no, there's no, there's no name after that. So one of the females seconded it.
We can add it to one of the female members of the board.
What, uh, what line was that?
The, uh, one fifty three. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it matters.
I'll take care of it.
Probably couldn't tell who it was, you know, that.
Okay.
Um. But otherwise, I don't think I made any changes. Oh, actually, um, just in line twenty, it's just a typo, um, existing, I think it's just missing an S. Exiting instead of existing, that's it.
Line twenty?
Yep.
I mean, those changes are so minor. Can we, can we approve these with those changes?
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion made to approve the twenty sixth, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one minutes with those changes.
Seconding.
Uh, vote, vote. Oh, thank you, Deepa.
Anna Testman, it's key, I.
That's you, Joe.
Joe, Retona, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I.
Did Deepa vote?
She did. I, I was kind of talking.
Sorry, I.
You did it really quickly.
Sorry.
All right, so we're through that. Um, so we have the planning board retreat scheduled for Wednesday, October twentieth. That's this coming Wednesday next week from five to seven. I had that on my calendar, I think, because we talked about it at three weeks ago, but it, it never went out officially. So I didn't know if it was still good for everybody. Or people put it on their calendar.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there. I, I'm, I usually work until five. I'm gonna try to get out of work a little early. I work from home that particular day. But I, I have to say, I may be a few minutes late, um, but I think that's fine. You guys can start without me.
Were we gonna have this in, based in the town hall? Is that what we agreed to?
I mean, I was hoping food would be involved, just saying.
So, um, I can, I can order pizza. I can order food. I'm, I'm happy to put an order in if someone wants to. Um, you know, I, I, I can run out, pick something up, uh, and I can work, I can work that out. So that's not an issue if, uh.
All right, I'll email, I'll email Pete my order, my pizza order. That sounds great. There's just, I'm just, I'm just thinking right after work to head to this. I'm gonna need food to be pro, to be useful, just, that's all.
No, I can, um.
I can bring something. I just need to know.
If pizza's okay with everybody.
I eat almost anything, so. Someone puts in an order, I'll, I'll be good.
You want to just do one cheese, one veggie? Does everybody eat cheese? Or pepperoni and cheese? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm a vegetarian, so, uh.
I'm ordering now.
Restricted because we're only five of us, so don't be restricted at all.
I'm actually always good with vegetarian options because. We may eat way too much meat at home.
I didn't realize we were meeting in town hall in person. Is that what that was set up?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the ba, in the basin, uh, meeting room B and C, which is in the basement of town hall.
I have to leave work early as well.
For the record, when I hear the word retreat, I don't imagine basement of town hall with pizza. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
It's our first.
I think we do.
You know, there's room for improvement, Anna. One thing.
I think we can do better. I'm just saying, I want that to be our, our first item on the agenda. I think retreat means something very different for me, just saying.
Well, trying to get two hours that everyone would agree come to, I would say was kind of a miracle in this case.
I'm, no, I'm with you, but the rendering is not accurate to reality. That's all I'm saying.
All right.
All right.
Um. Then the only other announcement, I, I mean, I sent out an email, but I have, I mean, I sent out an email about this, about the, uh. Inclusionary housing public forum. I know everyone's really excited to be on another Zoom meeting for another hour and a half. Uh, but I did want you to let you know that it was happening because. Um, it will be part of a discussion likely leading up to. Some kind of, um, warrant. About inclusionary zoning. That's the hope of, that's the hope. Um, I should say of. More than one person, you know, that. That that would lead to some kind of bylaw warrant on inclusionary zoning. So if you're interested in being part of that discussion. Um, I, I sent out that email about it, so.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to attend and, and it reminds me to ask Deepa and Tricia, and I don't know if this is appropriate to ask now, but I, I think you guys are involved in the, the mill project. Group or task force. At some point, could we get a report on how that's going and what's happening with that project?
I was gonna ask for an update on that tonight. I'm curious where that's at.
Well. I mean.
And I don't know much about that project and it'd be helpful, whether it's today or the next meeting on the twenty-sixth, to get a little bit of an overview if, if possible.
Well, let me summarize and Deepa, you keep me honest, um, with your objective opinion. So, um, we've only met. I guess three times. One of them I wasn't there because I was on vacation, but Deepa was there. And it was my understanding that the goal, that the goal of the committee was to figure out a process by which to. Um. Uh, have a very inclusive process, like how do we have a building process? Um, and, uh, a zoning change process, because that's what this would entail. That is very inclusive and transparent. And my, my thought, I thought it wasn't about the building itself, but it was about that process of how do we. Get there so that everyone is, th- this is a very transparent thing that everyone understands on what's going on with ten to fifty main when we get there, right? To actually designing the building. And we talked a lot about the first meeting, about the design process and how we have that be an open process and how do we. Get people involved so that they understand the pluses and minuses of various things and the opportunities and the risks. Of, of not following a certain course or, you know, that kind of thing. Um, I thought we had a, a really great meeting and then later on it seemed to be. A little bit. Kind of just down the normal path of, hey, here's the building, what do we like about it? What do we, do we not like about it? And that's when Deepa and I kind of were both like, whoa, 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 this wasn't, isn't. It's not really what we talked about. And so I, I think, I hope we're taking a couple steps back and saying. No, we're, this is, this is too much of a. This is the way we always do it process, which leads to. Not transparency, I guess. Um, and how, this is supposed to be something very different. And so we're having to, I feel, I'm hoping the committee is backtracking a little bit and starting again in a way. Um, on that process. So whatever rumors are, are out there, like, oh, it's designed and they're doing this and that, they're, they're. Yeah, it's, it's not. It, it's not going that road.
Was there, was there kind of a, a conscientious step back towards the process discussion again? Is that like, is that the new direction or is that? Like what, what's the status of that?
So I'm gonna chime in as well. Um, so I haven't been on this board for a long time. For me, it's also, uh, a new phase. And I think I'm learning a lot of things as I'm seeing these new projects come in and Midas School for me personally has been an eye opener. Uh, the project has been in the town for last three years and the number of questions that's come up last few. Meetings that all of us are aware of told me that there's some disconnect somewhere, right? There's something that. Uh, and all the comments that you're seeing out there, somewhere the public feels that they're not involved in it. So to me. This project is another sensitive topic that I'm seeing a lot of, uh, media attention. And to me, it felt like this is an opportunity to make sure that. We address all those issues as we come up to that final design, when it really goes out to the public for their comments. Making sure that the public is involved in it or the town is involved in every decision. So what is it that as. Committee members, we can do to make sure. We are making the town really aware of that this is going to be a design solution. You are involved, you're, the doors are open for you to come in and give opinion. And design, I mean, well, it's not opinion, like design with us, right? It's the building that you are going to see in your town. What is it that you want? So I think we all, uh, decided that we will take a few steps back and start from scratch, even though. This topic has been in town from what I understand from, for a year now. Um, so I think as designers, Tricia and I felt like. Let's go back to the basics, even if the architects has done that homework, like. What is that look and feel when you enter Ashland? Like, let's go back to the basic site planning decisions. And not say, okay, this is what you are all getting. This is what the number of units, it's not about the number of units. It's not about. Kind of the look and feel on Main Street. It's so many other issues. So we, at least I, what I understood is like. Even if the architectural team has done that homework, let's bring it all out again. Because as a committee, we are all talking about it. And tomorrow, when this comes actually in front of planning board. The, the com, this co, committee has those answers, right? We did this homework. We did this exercise. This is what we found. We have at least attempt. Attempted to answer those question, why forty R? What is it that's going to be helpful for the town? How is that matrix going to help? It's not about two hundred units or one ninety-five units, but this is what that calculation is and being as transparent as possible. So the town feels like, hey, they've been involved in this and they're not just. Throwing with this project. So I think at least that's what I got Tricia from our meeting and Tricia has done amazing job. Uh, kind of to kind of. Bring, let the, are helping the architects again in this situation. Saying, okay, this is what our process should be, uh. And I think she's done a lot of, lot of work again.
Well, I, I always appreciate having Deepa there because it's like. Otherwise I sound like a crazy person, you know, and. But, but what, what I did and then I sent it to Deepa to look at is because the, people in the committee aren't designers and so they didn't understand. How this process starts, because we talked about like, how do we ensure that this building. Is a building for this site for Ashland. It's not one that you could just take down the road and plop and framing him, right? And have it be fine. It has to be rooted into its spot, so. So it kind of created a list of, of what would be normal conceptual design questions in any. Project in any school project, you, you know, back to square one. And I, I gave them, I had Depot reviewed them and then, um, I gave them to Michael Herbert, who's chairing the committee to hopefully distribute or to give to, you know, I'm not sure where they're going from there. To, yeah, to kind of, uh, you know, hopefully in a way. Restart the process because it, right now, it's not a process that I'm. Happy with or confident in I, I, to be honest, so.
Now, that's really helpful.
One thing, that small thing, Anna, I just say that, I think is, at least, maybe this is my, not understanding the process in town, but. It's really important for every committee in town to weigh in on the project of the scale. So I think. The idea of this committee is to make sure that every committee has a say and comes to the table. With their viewpoints, whether it's sustainability committee or historical commission. We should not be inventing and finding information when it comes in front of the planning board, right? Because that should not be the process. It seems like that's a very wrong way. It's putting the planning board members at a kind of a very awkward spot. To say, okay, make a call on something that should have been way back, right? I think, uh, I felt like there seems to be some disconnect and it should be done early on. Sustainability should come to the table with, when the design is happening with what they see as the right thing for the site. Uh, historical commission should come to the board, say, okay, this is what are the important from their point. Planning board member should come to that and say, okay, this is what the parking ratio, whatever is important to planning board should come. So I think. We all agree that all the committee should weigh in early on in the design stage so that. We have a good parameters for the designers to work on. Um, I, I, I personally feel that that's a disconnect at this point right now. Uh, we have some great talent in town. And I think it's really important. And the other fact that I noticed is like, for some reason, the town. Members, whether it's a handful or few, uh, feel like they're not being heard. So I think it's really important for us to create, use this project as a platform to make sure that people feel that they were heard. Um, and at least I personally, that's what I would love this committee to work on as this project goes along.
So this is really helpful and I, I kind of have two reactions to this. One is we as a planning board. Have a valuable, we have a value add. Position, if you will, on process, right? Because like you said, once it comes to us, we are gonna have all kinds of questions. And it's better if that's all aired out as part of a public process early on. And so I, I think it'll be really helpful and I don't know what the right mechanism is. I don't know if we need to add it as an agenda item, but I would, I would love to. To have a little bit more of a heads up, if you will, early on, like as soon as possible on, hey, what's this project all about and what do we as planning board members feel? Are the types of questions or areas that are a concern to us or? Who do we believe as planning board members from a planning perspective? Needs to be involved in this process so that we can give that to Deepa and Tricia. To reinforce this committee. That's kind of my gut instinct that. I, I would like to be part of that and I, I, and I think we as a board need to be part of that more. Um. And, you know. And then the other thing I was gonna say is like the zoning change process that could, could occur here. That's a pretty controversial, important point that I don't think the public. Fully, um. Understands or has been vetted or has been discussed or has been educated about. Um, and so, you know, and, and that's a, if there is zoning changes out of that project, that's gonna come to us as planning board members to think about and, and be part of. Um, and the sooner we as a board educate ourselves as to what that means, the better. So. Those are my two gut instincts, like, I, I would like us as a planning board. Um, to reinforce Tricia's and Deepa's efforts by. Um, starting to think as a planning board as to how, how, how do we need to prepare for this project once it comes to us?
I think on adding to that, Anna, I think, uh, Tricia was amazing to write. Start of this, the three meetings she, the first thing she said was. What is it by right that the developer can do? Let's start from there, instead of saying this is what he is doing. And I think, um, that's where we've left off the team, saying, let's go back, even though this has been on boats for a year. Let's go back to that. Timelines, like what is it by right you can do? Because once you have an answer to that particular question. irrespective of how many people question you. You, you know, you can't go wrong in that, right? So I think she was right, right? The first meeting, that's what she said. And I think. Uh, everybody agreed on that committee that that's the right approach. And I think the architects last week, last time. Understood where she was coming from, so I think.
Have they, has that been established? I mean, has that been actually aired out? What, what can be done by right?
No, and, and that's the, and that's the problem and that's why, um, you, you know. Yes, the planning board needs to be. Maybe prepared or just aware of these type of projects before they. It's more the issues surrounding these type of projects, you know, before they. Like, we should have a. We should have a, a deep understanding of a forty R before it lands on our plate to evaluate a forty R, right? But we have two people on the planning board that are on this committee right now, but I think it's important to understand. That no matter what's out there on Facebook, like nothing is. Been decided and the building is designed. It's like, yes, was there drawings put in front of you? Yes, but they were the same drawings that were. A year ago, like there, there's nothing new, right? Before the committee was even formed. At, at least, at least I'm pretty sure, like, um, so. Um, so the, and the question about what can you do by right, I would say right now has not been a, a fact. Answered the way I want it answered, which is in terms of a visual. Like I want to see, we talked about the idea of a massing model, which is a tool we use and, you know, designed to understand. I want to see in terms of a model, what they can do by right. And we, we call that a massing model. It's a normal part of the process. But that has not been done yet. So these are the processes that Deepa and I are pushing.
Yep.
That are part of the normal, typical, both academic and true design process. That sometimes I, it seems to more and more get skipped over.
Right.
In these very quick developer projects.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is, I would be comfortable, I don't know how Joe feels about it, if Tricia and Deepa say, hey, this came up at a planning board meeting on October fourteenth. And the planning board supports getting that done, that piece that Tricia just described. And to, I don't know if that will make any difference, but I'm just saying that I think it's important for any project like this. For the planning board to have that active voice as early as possible to reinforce. Whatever it is that we need to reinforce to get our job done, because once this lands with us. We're gonna be told this was all dealt with. You need to just prove it.
That's right.
So, so I, I would like this to be a regular topic, this particular project. It's, it's the next big project, if you will, that has a lot of heat. And, and I, I, I'd like us to really make sure that. Deepa and Tricia have the support they need from the planning board to deliver our questions and our message and our position, which is that. We're not gonna repeat those mistakes again. We're, we're gonna be involved early on.
Yeah, so I guess we'll know, then, and the next meeting isn't even scheduled yet, though I did reach out to Michael about it, so, um. So, yeah, well, I mean, m- maybe, I guess at that meeting we'll know. If, what direction we're going in, because I was. We were pretty firm at the last meeting about. Not liking the direction it was going in, so. We will understand whether it's. Starting where it should be starting or if they're just gonna try to plow ahead. But.
I mean, and I'll add that we as a planning board can also, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, we can, we can. Publicly. Start thinking about this project or visualizing it or understanding what our issues are. So that if, if those steps are being skipped, we don't have to skip them.
I.
So, I mean, we could, we could have a conversation about what can be done there by right. As a board.
Can.
And that can be made public and that can add transparency.
So I. Can, but we have to make sure, I mean, I think if we have space sometimes for those things, I mean, look at, so we're supposed to have a light agenda and it's ten forty, you know, so, um. I think all those issues are important, but, um, I would say right now. We have two, two of our five members of the planning board that are on this committee and so we have a pretty heavy voice there already.
Yeah.
And, um. So I think it's worth, I think it definitely is worth touching base on it, um, but, um. But I don't think it needs to. Take up too much of the planning board's time at this time, w- when it's. So in the beginning stages. So.
I, I, I agree with everything that you've all said collectively, like, I, I, I'm greatly comforted by your presence on that. And I'm glad the planning board has Pete, has, you know, Tricia and Deepa on. And participating in this and. I, I guess all I would say is that I'd love to hear at each meeting, you know, I'd love to hear you guys kind of just give the update, even if it's, well, you know, we're waiting for the next meeting or whatever, I. I think those updates are. I think those updates are good. It helps us kind of keep track of where things are and 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 um, but, but I but I agree with everything that everybody said about this, so.
And I would just add, I mean, if there's a way to, you know, the, the document, Tricia, that you presented with the questions of design, you know, I'd love to see that, the conceptual design questions.
Oh, I'm happy to share the email, I.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm expanding on, on, on the request that not only do we get a quick update at every meeting, but could we also get the materials that you're sharing with that committee, so that we can educate ourselves as you go? Um, and that can inform, you know, questions we may ask, that I might ask, because if I look at your conceptual questions, I may say, hey, did this come up, or do you know what I'm saying? So.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, as long as, like, um, I mean, this is new territory for me, so as long as there's no open meeting law violation, like of that kind of sharing between committees, or I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, it's, it seems, uh, like it couldn't possibly be the case, cuz nothing is before the board.
Um, I mean, I think if we make it, can we make it like an open, can we add, do we need to add it to the agenda as, hey, update on project? And then the materials can be exchanged as part of the, as part of the agenda exchange?
And what I'm curious, uh, Tricia and Peter, like, when we sit on a committee, are we really truly representing planning board? Because technically, we shouldn't be, right? We are only two people out of five. So we are on that committee, just because we had an interest on that topic to learn about it. But we are not sharing anything or eh, or saying anything, because we are wearing the planning board hats.
Correct. I think you're speaking for yourself, right? You're not speaking for the planning. I think that's.
I mean, I think you could speak for the planning board if the planning board votes and asks you to speak for the planning board, right, Peter?
Not sure if that's a platform for it.
I'm not suggesting it is, but you could, in theory, be speaking on behalf of the board if, if the board so chooses.
I think if, if material, I think when you get into that realm, per se, you know, if, if, if there was material submitted obviously to this committee, the subcommittee, well, the committee, the task force, and the, and the major project, and then that material was shared with the planning board, the planning board had it on their agenda, and reviewed it and voted on it, in sort that they support X, Y, and Z, then yes, I would say, you know, Tricia and Deepa, I would feel confident to say, you know, as the planning board reviewed it and voted upon, and speaking for the planning board, this is how we see this application and or, not application as a total whole, but a simple element of, of a project. You know, what I can do, Deepa, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Anna, and and what you touched upon is what is forty R? Right? I have a fairly good presentation, which leaves a need to put together, and and I can share that with the planning board. Um, and so we can kind of get our arms wrapped around what is a forty R, what is a forty R process? And what it, who, you know, who, what does it entail? You know, the number one thing with a forty R process is, it's driven by a select. Um, and the planning board almost rides in the passenger seat a little bit, but, um, but i- i- it is almost like a one, you know, one A, the select board, one B is the planning board. And it kind of goes in that element, and and the planning board, however, is responsible, and you're correct, is to review the zoning article and to host the public hearing for that zoning article. So that kind of falls into our realm. But that, I, I would just end with that, I would say.
Yeah, and I think with that being said, you know, I'm gonna reiterate that I think the sooner that we as a planning board start to wrap our heads around the zoning, the, the better. I know that right now, it's just early, but at some, but we should do it early, based on prior experience and other projects. Um, we, the earlier we do it, the better, and, you know, I do think there's a way there's a way to share those materials with us as publicly as we need to, whether it's adding an agenda item that says update from, I think right now, it says update from board and planner. Maybe we add including Mill project.
So that. Update on ten to fifty minute project.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can have an update, we can have an update after, whenever we have a meeting. Um, I thi- I think the thing is that, um.
But what I'm saying is, make it part of the public agenda, so that you can exchange materials in preparation for it, relative to the Mill project, because then you're not violating any.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I am anyway, because it's my materials. It's, like, you know, um, but I, you know, so I think it can be, when, that we, that Deepa and I can give an update whenever we, you know, have a meeting, and I also think there's a list of things that we can be educating ourselves about the downtown zoning, the forty R, the, all the issues that may be in that area that are all independent kind of research, that we don't need to take up our meeting time um, to do at this point in time. I also wanna be a little bit careful of hey, the planning board voted, and we think this, and it starts to get a little bit like receiving a letter from the school committee and receiving a letter from the select board, and, uh, y- you know, I, I'm not sure. I think there are some mixed reviews about how those letters were, were received, you know, sometimes in, in the committee is here's one committee kind of coming down on another committee, and I think we wanna be careful of that as well, that we have our opportunity to have our voice. Um, but we need to be careful how we use it as well, out of respect for the other people on the committee who are also part of elected boards, so. Um, I think it's just, um, about being careful and respectful in that way, that, uh, that we are one board, but we're not the only board.
Yeah, I could not agree more. I think boards telling other boards what to do is problematic. I, I think boards being, educating themselves and being able to deliver valuable data for decisions made by other boards is, is very different, and and that's kind of what I'm, what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that we, we figure out, um, from Deepa and Tricia, what we as a board need to educate ourselves on. Um, and if there's specific questions we have as planning board members, that we can share those with Tricia and Deepa, so that they can explore those items. Um, and we can be fully prepared when the project does come to us. I I'm not suggesting we start telling other committees what to do. I I don't think any committee should be doing that. Or any letter should have ever been received.
Well, most of these meetings for, even for this project, has been open meeting, right? So the public is invited. It's not like we're doing closed doors. So, um, it's out there, you can hear it, it's just that it looks like our promotion of activities that the committees do is kind of on a calendar, so until you are a person really goes onto the calendar on a very regular basis, don't know really what activities are going on there. Um, so I think it's out there. Anybody can be part of our meeting, just like any other planning board meeting, so.
Alright, on, on that note, I really think we should wrap it up. It's almost eleven again, and I think we got through a lot, which has been hanging out there, so that's a good thing. Um, but if everyone's good, I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At ten forty-eight.
At ten forty-eight PM on October fourteenth.
See everyone, uh, Wednesday night.
Oh, do, do we have to vote or anything?
Seconded or voted or anything?
Usually do all, usually take a roll call.
Roll call.
Motion made, it's, okay.
Someone seconded. Roll call vote.
Deepa, good eye.
Anna, testment is key, I.
Joe, return, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Good night, everybody.
Right.
See you next Wednesday.